Good morning, everybody. Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners meeting on April the 18th. It is 9:32 and I call the meeting to order. And may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Barnett.
Here.
Commissioner Baxter.
Here.
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sax.
Here.
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Woodward.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. And we are going to have Commissioner Baxter lead us in the invocation and pledge allegiance. Everybody who is able to, if you will please stand.
Before we begin our business at hand, let us ask, give voice to our sincere gratitude to the divine for allowing us to reach this day with the abundant blessing that our great community has been bestowed. Let us pray that with sacrifice, guidance from the Almighty for our decision-making, we may continue to work for the betterment of all. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Baxter. All right, do we have any additions, deletions, or substitutions?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board. We have two special presentations, one for the outstanding Owls of FAU. Yay! And then we also have a special presentation for Coach Dusty May. On page 13, we have 3A2. We have a revised motion. On page 18, 37C, we have a revised summary adding in the percentages. On page 51, 3Q1, we have a revised motion entitled, changing the name of the Mental Director of Community Mental Health Agency to Darcy Davis. On page 74, 5I1, is an add-on. This deals with our individuals that need assistance for the homeless. We also have an add-on 5I2, which is also the modifications for our suspension of LIHEP and other programs from the state. On page 75, 5J1, is an add-on, and that's the PACE program. That concludes the additions, deletions, and substitutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Administrator, is there a motion to adopt the revised agenda as presented?
So.
We have a, we have, we have a motion by Commissioner Bernard, a second by the Vice Mayor, all in favor. All opposed, that motion carries seven to zero. Great. Next, moving on to the consent agenda. Would anybody like to pull any items from the consent agenda this morning? Oh, Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'd like to pull 3G1 for further review. I had some questions that I'd like additional answers on. That would be okay. That was a lean.
You have a page number on that?
That was a.
3G1.
Lean satisfaction. But there were, I had a lot of questions when I pulled the information, the backup there were. I have additional questions, so I'd like to just pull it for further review, if that's okay?
You want to, see, you want to postpone it?
Yes, please.
Postpone it?
Please.
We do it in two, we'll have to do two motions then? We need to do two? Yeah, okay. So, well, that's five, that's 5G1 on page 26. That'll be pulled, and then when we get to it. So what will happen is we'll move the.
Thank you.
So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item 3G1?
Yes.
We have a motion by the Vice Mayor, a second by Commissioner Baxter. Any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, all oppose, that motion carries seven to zero. Now moving on to item 3G1.
I'll make a motion that we postpone 3G1 for further review.
We have a motion by Commissioner Moreno to postpone item 3G1 for further review. Is there a second?
Second, but we have one more card. We have.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Thank you.
The second was by Commissioner Woodward. Okay. And Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
I'll withdraw.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, seeing none, this is for postponement on item 3G1 for further review. All in favor, all oppose, that motion carries seven to zero. Okay. Next, moving on, we are at a very, should be a very fun time. We are at special presentations. Commissioner Woodward? Think you have a couple to make this morning? This is a little out of the ordinary for us. We normally do our special presentations in the first meeting of the month, but because it was a very special thing that happened, we are taking things a little differently today. So we're delighted you're all here.
Good morning. If I could have our FAU team and coach staff, everyone, come here. This is usually where you stand for proclamations, so thank you. Yeah, thank you guys so much. Thank you. I would just like to thank all of you for coming. Thank you, Ms. Baker and George Lindley, I know you're in here somewhere, for arranging this to happen so quickly. I'd like all of you to know, I'm a proud Boca Ratonian, I live across the street from the university, and a proud member of Team PBC. All of us here were rooting for you from the very beginning of when you made it into March Madness. So our entire month of March was very exciting, thanks to you. And when you were in the Elite Eight, the last conversation I had was with Todd Bonlair, and he's in here somewhere, and I was like, if they make it to the Final Four, that's the night of the Mayor's Ball, which if you don't know, it's a pretty big deal for Team PBC that night. And then you made it. And I requested, please can we have TVs for the game at the Mayor's Ball? And I believe we have a picture of, there we are, right up here. So every commissioner in here and everyone there was rooting for you guys. And even though you did not win that night, that was one of the most exciting games that any of us have ever experienced. And I would just like to thank you personally for fighting all the way to the end and giving us all a very good memory, and we're so proud of you. So if we could just thank you. I will let you know. I will let you know, we do have a couple of, we have U-Miami and a UConn commissioners up here, but they were all definitely rooting for you, because you're our hometown team. So thank you for that. I will now read the proclamation, where we are declaring April 15 through the 22nd of 2023 as the Florida Atlantic University Men's Basketball Team Week. So whereas Florida Atlantic University represents Palm Beach County's only National Collegiate Athletic Association, NCAA Division One athletic program, with 19 athletic teams comprised of nearly 500 student athletes. And whereas FAU's 2022-23 men's basketball team not only achieved the best season in FAU's history, but became one of the greatest teams in the history of college basketball to achieve a remarkable 35-4 record. Win Conference USA Championship and earn an automatic spot in the NCAA Tournament from a field of 68. Whereas the team won four straight games in the NCAA Division One Basketball Tournament, also nicknamed "The Big Dance," and placed the Palm Beaches, Florida on the greatest stage in American sports by winning its way into the Final Four of the playoffs. And whereas this FAU basketball team attained the most historic accomplishment on a national level compared to any other sports team based in Palm Beach County, with its victorious effort that led to participation in the Final Four. And whereas the team exemplifies the best of sports in the Palm Beaches and winning in paradise. And Palm Beach County will forever remember and celebrate this FAU basketball team for reaching unparalleled success in sports and bringing the Palm Beaches and all of its communities tremendous pride and honor. Thank you. All right, I know one of you guys is graduating and has been here with the coach from the beginning. Which one is, is that you?
I'm Michael Forrest from Lauderdale, Florida.
We really appreciate you guys having us and cheering us along. We felt it the entire way.
She should do the other one.
I wonder if he has to hold this, so.
Maybe she could do it up front, she could do it up here.
Are you going to drop it now?
Why not?
Back instead of lawyer. Are you the lawyer?
Team members up? All right, they want team members up. Because they need to look taller?
I need to stand on a chair.
I know, I feel like.
Can you see him?
Be careful, be careful.
Hold on, hold on. Where's George? George Lindley.
Come on up, George.
Yeah, George.
Hurry up!
Come on, guys. Don't run too fast. We got Ryan here.
Yep, I'm here.
Here we go. No owl. We'll do one with no owl and then one with the owl.
That's right.
Now the owl. Fighting owl. The wolf owl. Okay. Okay, now the other.
All right, guys, all eyes are on me, on the finger. Make sure you're gonna be on three. Blink on one. One, two, three. One more. Go down a little bit lower. One, two, three.
Awesome! Glad you're ready. You're getting used to it. Wow!
Say, you guys, and congratulations.
Let him know to come to Florida. You're Lindley, aren't you? Who's your man? That's, that's a religious man.
My nephew is six nine.
No!
Yeah, I'm like, what?
Where'd that come from? That's awesome!
He doesn't ball. He didn't ball. So he's at, he's at Boston University.
Wow.
Yeah, but, yeah, he was, he just grew, like, man. But he didn't know he was. Right. By the time that he was. He had already.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Well. So what's the secret, guys? Hot the tea, right?
One more.
That's beautiful. Thank you. Congrats, too. That's all about.
I can have the team.
We don't want you guys in here. Yep. We work for somebody pretty good. And I'm very happy with that.
Well, that was for. Wait, no, wait. No, that meeting, no, I thought you were talking to Ari. My job. And they're spelled the same, J-A-L-E. Remember, let his name is out there. Call her my job.
Sarah, one more.
One more.
Okay.
Oh!
Now we got?
There we go. We'd like to start with one. Okay, that's good. Good, thank you. See, we're right.
We're hanging in there.
Hanging in there.
That's right, yep.
Whether you like it or not.
Yes. I know.
Those are not four inches, just so that you.
Oh, three?
Three. So if you had the floor, you'd be like, all set.
Being in paradise, I like that. The one thing that is right, what they talk about.
Are we there?
FAU.
Okay.
With Justin.
That was ridiculous.
Oh, where you going? That's the king of this.
Yeah, coach, yeah.
Another one?
Coach, yeah. Coach, yeah. Coach, yeah.
Thank you.
Is standing on those steps, Commissioner, Verdina?
Makes me nervous. I have, no ma'am, they're hot, but they ignore me on it. All I say is, you better not.
I'm talking about.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for bearing with us on that, and great photo op. We also have a second. Congratulations that I'd like to present to Coach May here, and George Lindley is also going to have a few things to say. Make your way up here, please. Okay, so, would like to present, congratulations to FAU Men's Basketball Team Coach Dusty May, 2023 Coach of the Year. Under his guidance, Coach May led the FAU NCAA Division One Men's Basketball Team to its greatest season in school history, winning the Conference USA Tournament and advancing the Owls to their first Final Four in program history. The 2022-23 basketball team, the most wins in school history, the most conference wins in school and Conference USA history, the longest winning streak in school history, and the third longest streak in Conference USA history, 20 games. May is the Owls' all-time leader in coaching wins with a record of 101 wins, 60 losses. In addition to his tremendous coaching ability, May brings immense passion, determination, and a commendable work ethic to the program. His efforts have created an enduring legacy for FAU men's basketball. Presented this 18th day of April 2023 by the Palm Beach County Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
It's an honor and privilege to represent Palm Beach County, FAU, and more importantly, this group of young men who are the future leaders of tomorrow. We had a great run, and we look forward to doing it again in '23-24.
Well, greetings. Boy, this is a fun day to be in the BCC chambers at the Government Center and celebrate one of the, the best accomplishments in sports in the, in the history of our county. Joined by our Board President, Tony LaFaso, and our Secretary, soon-to-be Vice President, Bishop Walter O'Shea Granger, and our newest Board Member, Jennifer Cirillo, Parks and Rec Director as well. I will tell you, representing the, this, this county sports tourism arm, and as a graduate of FAU and its MBA Sports Management Program, I could not have more pride to be affiliated with the university, and I could not be more excited about the partnership that we enjoy with FAU Athletics, Brian and his team. Not only is FAU has brought us winning in paradise, but they're a great sports tourism partner, from conference championships to NCAA Golf Regional Championships, to national tournaments and invitationals, to a college football postseason bowl game. There is a lot of tourism and economic development opportunities and, and activation that's happening through our relationship with FAU. Our Sports Commission owns and operates the Palm Beach County Sports Hall of Fame on behalf of the county, with the mission of recognizing athletes, coaches, administrators, media who've excelled in defining sports in the Palm Beaches. The Hall of Fame represents excellence and is the highest sports-related recognition that's presented by the county and its Sports Commission. It embodies the highest achieving men and women in amateur sports, high school sports, college sports, and professional sports, and for, for 46 years, it has honored the best of sports in our area. What this basketball team attained this season is one of the most momentous occasions for sport accomplishment in the history of our county, and this is one of, not the best team for any sport ever assembled in this county, that has placed our county on the greatest stage in, in American sports. And because of that, the incredible effort of this basketball team, and the, one of the greatest coaching performances, performances in the history of college basketball, certainly in our county, the Palm Beach County Sports Hall of Fame Committee members and inductees voted Coach Dusty May as the Palm Beach County Sports Hall of Fame Coach of the Year. This recognition took place on April 2nd, but since the FAU basketball team and Coach May and his entire coaching staff and the athletic staff, they were in Houston for the Final Four, so they could not be present to accept the award, but in front of the county leadership, we felt this was a, a great opportunity just to, to thank you. It was a Hall of Fame season. You coached, obviously, one of the best teams, if not the, like I said, I mean, it's the best team our county's ever seen, and you embody what the, the Palm Beach County Sports Hall of Fame is, and you will forever be immortalized by this, by our county and its Hall of Fame. So with that, we, we have a, a presentation that we will, will deliver to the FAU, to the campus for you, so. Thank you very much.
One more thing I would like to apologize. I am the District Commissioner for Boca Raton Campus, but our District One, Moreno, is representing the North County. She also has part of your campus. So, did you want to say anything?
Go Owls. And that's from the person that graduated from UConn, just saying.
All right. Well, thank you all for being here. Thank you, Commissioner Woodward, for arranging this. This is a wonderful celebration. Just to also, the team will be out in the atrium, taking some pictures, so if you're looking to get your pictures, I ask that you go out to the atrium. All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. What a special way to start the day. All right, moving on. We are moving on to public hearings, so I think we need a receive and file. Let me just get there.
Thank you. I make a motion that we adopt.
A receive and file.
Oh, I'm sorry. Apologize. Make a motion to receive and file proof of publication.
We have a motion by Commissioner Moreno, and a second, for a motion to receive and file proof of publication, and a second by the Vice Mayor. Any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, all oppose, that motion carries seven to zero. Okay, moving on. This is a item 4A1, and this is a mid-year adjustment for our airport's budget. Does anyone need a presentation on this? No? All right. Is there any questions from the board, or we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we adopt A1A and B.
So we, we have a motion from Commissioner Moreno to adopt staff recommendations on 4A1A and B, approving the budget transfers for the airport. We have a second by Commissioner, by Commissioner Barnett. Any further discussion on this item, seeing none, all in favor, all oppose, this motion carries seven to zero. All right. Moving on. Water Utilities. This is item 5A1. What? Did I miss something? Everybody good? All right. Water Utilities, item 5A1. This is, uh, Directive, uh, Project Proceeds for Florida Design Drilling. Does anyone want a presentation on this item?
No.
No. We have, uh.
Make a motion.
We have a motion by the Vice Mayor to approve item 5A1. A second by Commissioner Marino, all in favor? All opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. Now, item 5B1, and this is on airports. This is, uh, this is, uh, $807,000, um, project, and it exceeds the threshold of $325,000. We have a motion by the Vice Mayor to move approval on 5B1. We have a second by Commissioner Marino. Any discussions? Seeing none, all in favor? All, oh.
I just want to say this, if everything goes according to Hoyle, we won't have to approve this on the regular agenda. This will be on consent. So we'll keep our fingers crossed that the bill keeps moving forward and that, uh, the threshold will be a million dollars and not 325,000.
All right. We have a, we have a, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. All right, moving on. We are now on to 5B2. Do we have, this is also exceeds the $325,000 threshold. Commissioner Woodward, you recognize?
Hi, yes. I just wanted to see if we could get an update. I know this had like an overall budget that was kind of put into place at the beginning, and I added up where we are now. We're around 12.5 million. Where, where do we stand on the, the future numbers of this project and what was expected?
So for, I'm assuming you're talking about the Concourse B project. Um, so currently, the first phase is fully funded. That's about $17.4 million. Remaining balance we have is about $26.5 million. The overall shortfall is going to be about $46 million, um, for the next coming phases. The good news is, is that we are going to be doing PSC applications. We have bill funding this allocated, and we have more than enough local revenue for the match. Um, so it's just time and process.
So just, we are, as far as like increases in cost and everything, we're still going to be good with how you see this moving forward? I know things have gone up tremendously.
Um, it's chasing a bouncing ball. Um, every time we ask for an engineer's estimate, the price goes up. Until we get the actual guaranteed maximum price for the next few phases of project, we won't know for certain. But we have different levers that we can pull to make sure that we're, you know, phasing it appropriately and funding it fully as we, we move through each phase.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Baxter, you recognize?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to thank Laura. I had the amazing experience this past Saturday of being there to welcome back our veterans from the Honor Flight. And I have to tell you, it was so moving and such an amazing event and experience. And I know you and your staff worked very hard to make that possible. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion on item 5B2? Is there a motion?
Motion.
You have a second? Okay, so we have a motion by the Vice Mayor, a second by Commissioner Woodward. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. All right, moving on to five, item 5C1. This is a budget transfer for ISS for upgraded software. Does anyone require a presentation on this item? Seeing none, do we have a motion then on this? We have a motion by the Vice Mayor on 5C1, A and B. We have a second by Commissioner Woodward, all in favor? All opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. Now, moving on to item 5D1, Housing and Economic Development. These are, um, this is for a bond that neither the taxing power nor the faith or credit of the county nor any county funds are pledged to pay the principal redemption premium, if any, or interest on the bonds. And this is for some new affordable housing, uh, going into the city of West Palm Beach. Do we have a motion?
Some movement, Mayor.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bernard, a second by the Vice Mayor. Any further discussion? Is there, is there cards on this? Any further discussion? You have a question. So Commissioner Woodward has a question.
Um, hi, yes. In my agenda review yesterday, I asked about, uh, the actual cost per unit on these. As, if I did my numbers right, are we looking at 445,000 per unit? Is that?
Differ to David.
Yes, that's correct. I, I think the reason this one is so significantly higher than the other project in Pohke is that this project will be on scattered sites, so there are a number of separate buildings. It's more akin to, you know, doing a quad or duplex type of arrangement. But it is eye-opening, but that is what construction costs have done to affordable housing in Palm Beach County.
And I believe there's a representative here from Buenos Aires. Is Terry here?
No, Terry, Terry's not here. She, she left.
No, I just, I, it was a little alarming. Like you said, it was eye-opening that this is the cost of building affordable housing. We, we have our jobs cut out for us, yes?
That's very true.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none. All in favor? All opposed? This motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. All right, moving on to item 5D2. This also is a bond, uh, again, let's see. Uh, neither the taxing power nor the faith and credit of the county nor any county funds are pledged to pay the principal redemptive premium, if any, or interest on these bonds. And this is for multifamily housing, and I believe this is in, uh, in Riviera Beach. Oh, Pohke.
Pohke.
Pohke, sorry. All right. Uh, does anyone need a presentation on this project? Do we have a motion? We have a motion by Commissioner Baxter, a second by Commissioner Bernard. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. And now on to item 5D3. This is a waiver of the statutory requirement by a majority vote plus one that the two public hearings to be held June 13th and July 11th to be held after 5:00 PM to consider the designation of the parcel located at 8760 Atlantic Avenue in unincorporated Palm Beach County. And it is a brownfield area. This advertising of the public hearings on June 13th that, uh, to move this to 9:30 AM on Tuesday, July 11th. So that's what is in front of us. Uh, no county funds for implementation are required. This item requires a supermajority of five votes. We have a motion by Commissioner Marino. We have a second by the Vice Mayor. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? That item carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now on to Palm Tran. This is item 5E1, and this is an emergency contract with MV Transportation and, uh, for Go Glades Mobility On-Demand Service and a budget transfer of $254,000. Well, the, uh, contract not to exceed one point, let's call it 6 million and 1.577,7300 and 254,313 on the budget transfer. Do we, anyone need a presentation on this item? I'm not seeing anybody asking for a presentation.
I'm, if I could move.
We have a motion by the Vice Mayor. Is there a second? We have a second by Commissioner Barnett. Is there any discussion? We have a card. Okay, we will, we have a motion and a second, and we have a card now.
Dwight Mattingly? This is on 5E1.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioners, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, the Go Glade service in Belgrade has been very successful, and as the union representative and president of the local, uh, I just want to appre, tell you, we thank you in the past for all the input that you have done, uh, for helping this project to be successful. And we wish to continue and hope that you pass in favor of this being done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Um, and also I had to note, the cost of the Go Glade service is already included in the Palm Trans FY 2023 budget. Okay. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing, oh, Sarah, sorry. I mean, Commissioner Baxter, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. And not on this, but just a brief note because I keep asking for it. And so now I would, it would be so helpful if I could get these presentations emailed to me at least the day before and not the morning of or the day right as we start. It would just be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, uh, all in favor? All opposed? This motion carries seven to zero. Now, item 5E2, also, uh, this is, uh, also for Palm Tran. Uh, this is to approve an emergency contract with MV Transportation and MV Contract Transportation with a not to exceed of $21,711,000 for the period of January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2023. Uh, I, and there's an item B, an emergency contract with First Transit, a subsidiary of TransDev in North America, not to exceed the amount of $27,100,000 for the period of January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2023 for the provision of paratransit, both are for paratransit service. And then item C, approve a budget transfer of $9,527,077 for Palm Tran Operating Reserve, uh, to contractual services to align the budget with the new paratransit emergency contract rates. Okay, um, Commissioner Sax, your light is lit.
Thank you.
Uh, Vice Mayor, sorry.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor. I need to know, um, why is it that we have such a need for paratransit? That's it.
If I could, uh, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Clinton Forbes, Executive Director of Palm Tran. The paratransit service, uh, is a, a federal mandate of the American Disabilities Act of 1990. Uh, if you operate a fixed route public transportation system, you are required by the federal government to provide complimentary, very similar service to those who cannot use the fixed route system because of their disability, uh, because of their disability. And so that's the, that's the requirement, uh, of, uh, paratransit services in the county and really everywhere else around the country that operates fixed route service and receives federal funds.
I, I understand that since 1990. Now, do we have kneeling buses?
Oh, we do have fixed route kneeling buses. Our buses are 100% ADA accessible on the fixed route.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And on the paratransit, uh, service, we have what we call cutaway vehicles. They're the small vans, uh, really a van on a truck chassis. And, um, they have lifts. They actually have lifts, uh, to assist those with mobility, uh, uh, issues and that are using mobility devices.
Just to be transparent, I've used your paratransit for our daughter and other individuals at the Jewish Association for Residential Care, and they are excellent. They are excellent.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Is it that you need more money for more of these vans, of these paratransit buses?
Um, no, it's not that we need more money for more of the vehicles. We actually have a pretty good complement of vehicles, uh, for our pan, paratransit, probably much more than most similar type, um, services that you would find around the country that have fixed route. I mean, we, uh, have, uh, our vehicles are operated via these contracts. So really what we're asking for you today is an emergency contract because when we started off on the bid process to go out for these, for, for this service, uh, it started back in 2019, and we went through two bids, both of which, uh, the respondents were deemed non-responsive for both of those. So we've been working with, um, Melody Thelwell, who's with us up here today and, and purchasing to make sure that we can craft and draft this RFP so we don't have a third time where we go out and end up with unresponsive, um, you know, respondents coming back in.
So in other words, what you're asking for is to expedite the funding so that we can, so that we need more of these?
Yeah, Vice Mayor.
More of these vehicles?
What we're asking for today is to just hold us over for this next year with the same service that we're providing. So that we can go out to our RFP in August of this year and then come back to you with recommendations for service provision going forward for the next presumably six or seven years with a new contract that would begin, um, next year in 2024.
This is a federal mandate. 1990. How much money are we getting from the federal government to help us out?
It's actually.
That's a good question.
It's actually an unfunded federal mandate.
Unfunded federal mandate.
Yeah, so you, you have to provide this service if you accept money for your general public transportation services like fixed route. And, and so that, that, uh, service is supported by our overall, uh, budget.
I'm going to approve this. I don't have any, I know that you do an excellent service. I know because I use you. Use your service. It's excellent. But I want to talk to you later on at another date about getting our, our legislative staff in Washington to help us fund this program, uh, in addition to what the county taxpayers are doing. In addition to that, the state, I'm sure Mr. Bonlaren, are they giving, uh, a contribution to the county, uh, to help us with our paratransit?
They are under the TD program, and I can tell you that currently we are the only county in the state that has an additional appropriation that's currently in the budget for a million dollars. $4 to come back specifically to Palm Beach County to help offset some of these. So we, we overmatch a lot of the requirements that we believe we have to, and so we've asked the state, hey, we're providing a lot of service in our community. We have a lot of folks in need, and so to date, we have a million dollars in there. We've got three weeks to hold on to it and make our case to the governor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bonlaren.
And if I may, Commissioner, um, just want to mention that we are slated for April 25th, aboard, your board workshop to really drill down on Palm Tran overall and specifically the paratransit service. It's a very costly service, uh, and it's not only costly in Palm Beach, it's costly everywhere. Uh, it's a central theme in our transit industry on how we begin to control the cost of, of, of paratransit service. Um, it's a very worthy service, uh, but also very costly. And so we plan on, we actually slated on the agenda for April 25th to take a deep dive into Palm Tran.
May I suggest something? Can we have a member of our legislative delegation staff to sit with us during that workshop? Because, look, the federal government has mandated this since 1990. We have been in compliance. The state is, is maybe not matching dollar for dollar, but the feds need to be there as well. And if we could, we, you do such a wonderful job in our transit, Mr. Forbes. So I'd love to have a, a staff member of our congressional, uh, delegation to sit with us, and maybe we can, uh, maybe we can squeeze some, uh, some, some money from, uh, from the federal government as well.
That is a good suggestion. We will invite, uh, our legislative delegation. We'll send out an invitation so that they know we're doing that presentation next Tuesday and ask them to join us in the chambers.
Thank you so much. Thank you for what you do.
All right. Uh, we have Commissioner Baxter, then Barnett, and then we've also got some, uh, cards to speak on this.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So we've had, uh, a few conversations and some things that, um, you know, I wanted to bring to that. I absolutely love the paratransit. I do know it's a little more expensive than the fixed route, but helping handicap people and anyone that is really of a need get from door to door. It, that's amazing. I think it's absolutely wonderful. I would like to see we, be, us be able to offer for taxpayer dollars a more door-to-door service as well. And I will be during this presentation, um, asking more information about maybe transitioning part of our fixed route system to a voucher program because we have a lot of areas not serviced by fixed route. We have other needs, whether it's students who can't afford a car, whether it's, um, human traffic recovery, um, constituents who need to get to and from work who don't feel comfortable on a crowded bus. Whether, I mean, there's a long list of people. I mean, when we are spending, and I'll wait until your presentation to go into numbers, but when we're spending this much money on a fixed route system, I think we could, there's room to maybe transfer some of that money, not add to, into a voucher program for people. If they want to order a lift or a service, that they can also get picked up from their door and get to where they need to go. It's, it's vital in today, and people are struggling, and some people have even had to give up their cars. So let's keep this in mind when we're going forward. I would love to see a voucher program or system put in place, um, to help them. Thank you. I would love to see a voucher program or system put in place to help them. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Baxter. Commissioner Barnett, you're recognized.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. As you stated earlier, I also plan to vote to approve this. I just wanted to say thank you to Clinton and Todd and everyone at Palm Tran. You provide such a critical service. And the need in particular in my district is very high. I've had family and friends who use your service very frequently. And it was a pleasure last Wednesday to be able to meet a lot of the operators at the intermodal with you and the mayor and Ms. Verdina Baker, to thank those operators who work really long routes and long hours serving the people in our county. It was a real great pleasure. And thank you for the service you provide to our residents.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnett. Now, recognize Commissioner Marino.
Thank you. Commissioner Baxter, thank you. That was, that is actually something that I've also been saying for two and a half years. And I do believe that I've asked in the past if there is a pilot program somewhere else around here that has done this because we do spend an inordinate amount of money on buses that are not full on several different routes. And I know that there are some pilot programs where they've done voucher systems with Uber, Lyft, and whatnot. And I really do think we need to come into the modern era and, you know, do some kind of a multi-level delivery of service because it's an astounding amount of money, an astounding amount of money. And when you, what you just said about, you know, we're mandated, we have an unfunded mandate to do the paratransit. So just looking at this, you know, we're talking about $50 million. And then you tack on Go Glades, and that's another 20-some-odd million dollars. So we've got $70 million here. And if I'm not mistaken, that's out of our pockets.
Go Glades is only 1.5 million.
Pardon me, sorry. Oh, sorry. Correct, 1.5. So we're still looking at close to $50,000, $50 million? So anything that we can do to shave that and anything we can do to make our delivery of service better and more efficient. And I've heard people say, you know, I have to wait, I have to wait at this station to get to this bus, then I got to wait on another bus to get here, but I got to get to the, I'm sorry, the bus stop itself, you know. And three hours is not an inordinate amount of time for someone to get to work. So anything we can do to speed up the process. Ms. Baxter, thank you for, Commissioner Baxter, thank you for bringing this up again. We need to look and see if there's other pilot programs. And if there aren't, we need to design our own.
Mr. Mayor, if I may
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Commissioner Baxter, Marino, we're excited about getting in front of you on April 25th to share with you what we're about to implement in terms of a pilot program that will use ride-hailing services such as Uber, Lyft, and taxis. And so we'll share that with you on April 25th. And I'll tell you that those systems are complementary. There are areas in this county that we probably should have less fixed route because they're less dense. And we did that with the RPM, working with the county administrator and the public, where we really redesigned the system to, you know, really build the ridership corridors on the eastern part of the county. And as we implemented Go Glades, we recognized that we could remove some fixed route from, you know, a rural area and provide door-to-door. So we are looking at that all across the county, and we're excited to share that with you on April 25th.
Okay. Vice Mayor, you're recognized.
You did an amazing job, and I compliment you. And I compliment Mr. Bonner to bring the money down. Can you give us an idea before April 25th of your, of the routes that you do, the routes? And so that we know where, what we're talking about? Because from what I know, we don't have any buses that go to, maybe go to the VA Medical Center in West Palm Beach. So, and I don't know all the bus routes. I know that there are many that don't go into District 5. And maybe they should, maybe they shouldn't. I don't know. But if you could provide us with maybe a map of the bus routes today, then we can take a look at it. And also with regard to the paratransit, I know that you stop at, or you will service Jark, and maybe there's other rehab places that you also already do. So that we have an idea of how good the service is, where the stops are in our districts, and how we can make it even better. Thank you so much for that. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. I think we have some cards on this item?
Yes, we do. And please, you can use both podiums. Larry McDowell, followed by Carolyn Lapp, Shannon Borst, Eileen Jasper. Those are my first four cards. And Don Manning, and then Don Manningly. Thank you. Anyone can come up to the podiums, please. Okay? Oh, perfect. Thank you. I can't see.
Go ahead, Mr. McDowell.
My name's Larry McDowell with the Braille Club of Palm Beach County. And I just wanted to thank and recognize Palm Tran Connection for allowing the people in the Palm Beach County with certain disabilities, my disability is I'm visually impaired, to be able to be consumers in Palm Beach County and not just residents. We use Palm Tran Connection to do a number of activities throughout the county that we wouldn't be able to do unless we had the transportation services. We go to picnics at Okeaheli Park. We're able to go to the whole sound singing Christmas tree during the holidays. There's a number of events that sometimes when you have to depend on relatives and other people to take you to certain places, you don't have the autonomy and the freedom to be your own self. So Palm Tran Connection gives us that opportunity to move around the county freely, independently, and safely. And we appreciate the opportunity to do that. We appreciate the service, and we hope the service is allowed to continue and improve.
Thank you very much, Mr. McDowell.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I also want to thank Palm Tran Connection for the service they provide and Palm Tran. We have been around the country and ridden in many of the paratransit services, and none are like Palm Beach County's. We have the best, in our opinion. My husband is also blind. And last month, we traveled to Tallahassee for Transportation Disadvantage Day to speak to legislators about funding our transportation disadvantage program. Palm Beach County is unique in that it's one of the only counties in Florida that has this program. So we're very fortunate, and we want to keep it. Eileen's here with me, and she can tell you that when she worked, this provided her transportation because she worked at night and after hours for regular transportation. Last, for this trip to Tallahassee for Transportation Day, it was our 24th trip that Palm Beach County advocates have made to talk to legislators about funding the service. And because it's so important to us, this is a 17-hour trip. And it's made by blind people and people with all kinds of physical issues. But transportation is important to us. It's like food and air and water. My husband and I, we have four children. We moved to Palm Beach County for the transportation system. We were able to take our kids to Little League. We was able to bag popcorn for the safety patrols. And we were able to start the Florida Outreach Center for the Blind, where most of our employees are blind, our volunteers are blind, and all of our students are blind. If you come to our center, you'll see an empty parking lot because nobody drives. Guess how we get there? Paratransit. This is important to us. You know, now we can be taxpayers. We can be a viable part of our community. We can be active. We teach blind people to go to work, to have a career, to get an education. You know, they have homes. They're important and needed in our community. Just to leave you with this, every seven minutes, someone in America loses their sight. Diabetes is a leading cause of blindness now. It's no longer maculata generation. And here in our beloved county of Palm Beach, we have more than 43,000 blind and visually impaired residents. So transportation is needed. The need is there.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here.
Hi, good morning. My name's Eileen Jasper. And I'm very appreciative of Palm Tran Connection. I take it to go shopping, to church, everywhere I go. I do take fixed route on occasion. However, I don't like crossing streets. It's extremely hard to cross streets. I'm visually impaired. And I've been hit by a car one time and several times on other occasions. And so I'm quite appreciative of the service. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here.
I have two more cards, Shannon Borst and Quay Manningly.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay? Hi, my name's Shannon Borst, and I worked with First, I worked with First Transit. I just wanted to come here and show our support. We have been in partnership with Palm Tran Connection since 2015. We work very close together to make sure that our shared passengers receive safe and efficient service. We are very excited to continue our partnership with Palm Tran Connection. Like you just heard from some of our passengers that use the service, our drivers are out there delivering safe service to folks that are using the service, not only for, you know, going to shopping, doctor's appointments, but you know, some of the people that use our service use it for critical reasons, right, like dialysis, life-saving treatments that they need. And we're just really proud to be able to deliver that service and have the partnership here with Palm Tran Connection. And we look forward to a future partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manningly, you're recognized.
Good morning again, Commissioners and Mayor, Vice Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity. I represent the operators that operate this service. And what I can tell you is that all of those operators go through a very extensive Level 2 background check. And that's included in the information that you were provided as a backup. And they're registered with the Department of Elder Affairs. And this background check is very extensive. My concern that I just want to voice is there's an opportunity in here for First Transit to be able to partner with two TNC transportation network companies. And we have asked the question, how are we going to confirm that every single one of those operators that pick up any of these passengers are going to go through the same Level 2 background checks and be certified with the Department of Elder Affairs? I've been in contact with First Transit General Manager, and he has assured me that that will be something that is necessary for all the operators to go through. However, they're not the ones that dispatch and send the vehicle to the client. Palm Tran does that. So I have not heard yet how that connectivity is going to happen. That's a concern of mine. I have two other things I'd like to say before I close, if I may have the opportunity. I want to thank those of you on the board that went down to our intermodal and were there to memorialize some of our operators and the great job that they do. Thank you for doing that. And Commissioner Baxter, although we have not met, and I look forward to having a meeting with you, I just want to go back to your comment about the fixed route and just say that, you know, we have always advocated for more service. And Vice Mayor Sacks mentioned this too. The issue has always been funding. Where does the funding come from, right? And just keep in mind that on an annual basis, Palm Tran gets about $20 million from the federal government to operate the fixed route as it is. And that's based upon boardings, and that's based upon the number of boardings that we do. And as far as extra door-to-door service, I think Go Glades has become a model that maybe Mr. Forbes will in the future, and he has told me he's looking at to venture in other service. But that becomes very expensive when you do that on a regular basis. So it's like building a model so that you can put a fixed route in there.
Can I ask you to wrap up your comments, sir?
I just want to thank you and hope that you vote in favor of this extension of the year's service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we have a light from Commissioner Sacks and Commissioner Baxter. Vice Mayor Sacks.
Mr. Manningly, come on up. I worked with you in the legislature as you represented the bus operators. And we've always done as much as we can. Maybe we need to do more. I've seen operators get out of their buses to help people. I just saw the other day, get out and help a little girl get out so that she could go to see the doctor. And I was just, she didn't know I was there, and I didn't want to take a picture of her. But these are the kinds of things that really express how very, very well our operators are trained. Will you be here when we have this other meeting on April 20th, the workshop, so that we can make sure that whatever enforcement, whatever investigations we do for our operators with Palm Tran will also be extended to those in any subcontract that we do, sir? Will you, because I want to make sure that, you know, our contractors or bus operators are following the same rules that are mandated and required for the operators, for our county staff as well.
Yes, I can be here. And I just want to say that Mr. Forbes and I partner very well together and collaborate on a lot of these issues. So I'll be happy to be here for that.
Thank you. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you. I do look forward to getting down there and doing tours, lots of tours, as you know. I just wanted to, since you brought it up, point out a few things. Overall, paratransit fixed route systems, and I'm going to use approximate numbers here, totaling about $190 million a year to our taxpayers. Even if we get $20 million from a federal source and another 20 from a state source, the taxpayers are normally still on the hook for roughly, well, even more, say we get even more dollars than that from other funding sources, they are still on the hook for $130 million. That's a lot of money. And 80 million of that is coming from our fixed route systems. And to Commissioner Marino's point, these buses are not full. So whereas I do think, you know, there is room for it, we have a lot of residents that do not fall under paratransit because they're not handicapped. They need also to partake in a system, such as a voucher system, to be able to get places, especially now. Insurances have gone up, the price of cars payments, people can't make those payments. They're losing cars. We have a huge need in our community right now. And getting to a bus stop in 90-plus degree weather or in pouring down rain doesn't seem ideal all the time. And where I get that it might be less expensive than the paratransit, a fixed route system isn't being, I feel, a most effective use of taxpayer dollars. So I do thank you, and I do look forward to the tour. I just think there's room for all of it. We don't, but not raising prices. We don't, but not raising prices, you know, let's reallocate, maybe cut back some, which would be preferable, and use technology. We are at a different place now than we ever have been in society than before with the use of these Uber, Lifts. And I just look forward to kind of exploring all the options. But thank you for your comments.
Thank you. All right. I don't think we have any other cards. With that, we have a couple Commissioners. What do we have left? Four? We do have four left. Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion? So we have a motion by Commissioner Woodward. We have a second by Commissioner Baxter. This is on Item 5E2, A, B, and C, all in favor, all opposed. That motion carries four to zero with Commissioner Marino, Commissioner Barnett, and... Would you like, you guys want to vote on this item?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Okay. So it's now six to zero. And I hear Commissioner Marino walking back in. Commissioner Marino, you want to vote on this item? Would you like to vote on this item?
Yes.
And you are voting?
Four.
She's voting four. So make that a seven to zero vote. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your discussion. We look forward to seeing you at the workshop. Thank you, Mayor, as Commissioners, for your support. Thank you. Okay, moving on, we are now at Item 5F1. And this is, let's see, we're doing, these are some bonds, issuing bonds for some hardening of facilities. Does anyone need a presentation on this item? Not seeing anybody asking for a presentation. Would, does anybody have any questions, or would you like to?
One, sorry.
We're on 5F1. This is on issuing $57 million in bonds to, for redevelopment projects for the medical examiner's office expansion, mosquito control redevelopment, and generators and exterior hardening at the critical accounting facilities. These bonds will be issued at not to exceed amount of 57 million. On a competitive basis, the debt and service payments are secured by a pledge of certain non-advalorem revenues deposited in debt service fund created under the resolution. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Sacks. We have a second by Commissioner Marino. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed. This motion carries seven to zero. Thank you very much. Moving on, Item 5G1. This is a continuing contract construction services with Southeast Highway Guardian, Highway Guard Rail and Intentionators, not to exceed $1.5 million over the course of 36 months. Anyone need a presentation on this item? Not seeing one. All right, is there any questions, or is there a motion? We have a motion by Commissioner Baxter, and we have a second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed. This motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. Now on...
Mayor, I'm sorry. I just want, for the record, I want to highlight the fact that in this particular item, in our contracts, we actually follow FDOT on certain elements of it. FDOT recently, this is the item, right? Okay. FDOT, you're looking at me like, FDOT recently made some changes to theirs. This went into our contract. This is a change in our existing policy. So I want to make it clear that, and get your permission, that we can move forward. FDOT expanded due to the volatility of the market. They expanded the actual items that they will make adjustments for during the contract period. And so those items include steel, aluminum, PVC, copper, and diesel fuel. If those, the cost of those items exceed 5% over what they bid it, then adjustments are made based upon the market. And there is a specific item they'll go to to look at what the prices are. If it goes down 5% lower than what they bid it, we'll get credit. We won't pay them as much. But I also want you to know that, you know, we have contingencies in all of our capital programs. If this project starts to exceed the overall budget, which includes the contingency, we will be bringing these items back to you because I don't want it to impact other projects that you have approved and expect to be moving forward. And then we can make a decision on what we're going to do with the projects. So I just want to highlight that because that is a policy change.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. And I, just to accentuate what Ms. Baker said, I've been working with David Ricks in the engineering department. Everything is going up. All the prices are going up. And whatever we can do, and I know our engineering department has worked very hard to keep things within a reasonable amount of money. And so I congratulate you, and I didn't want to say anything, but now that Ms. Baker brought it up, let me confirm that this is going to be a very good deal for the county. And we're working, you are working so hard, Mr. Ricks, in your department, all the engineers, in making sure that roadway construction, any of the signs, anything having to do with our transportation system, the money is going up and up and up, and you are trying very hard to keep it within a reasonable amount. And I congratulate you and thank you on behalf of the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Okay, moving on to, yeah, we took a vote on that. Okay, moving on to 5H1. This is to acquire 3.3 acres of undeveloped land on Belvedere Road near animal care and control facility. This would authorize staff to negotiate for the purchase of the property. Does anyone need a presentation on this? Commissioner Baxter would like a presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. This is Ms. Jala, Director of Facilities Development and Operations. With me here today is Chief Assistant County Attorney Howard Falcon and Ms. Purby Boukaida, Director of Property and Real Estate Management. Purby, will take it away with the presentation.
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. Today we are seeking authorization for staff to negotiate the acquisition of approximately 3.3 acres of undeveloped land located adjacent to the county's animal care and control facility. The county's Department of Public Safety has a 14.05 acre animal care and control facility located at 7100 Belvedere Road in unincorporated Palm Beach County. A component of services delivered at the animal care control facility is the care and custody of large animals, such as cows, horses, and other livestock. Currently, this is accommodated on pasture land located at the extreme south end of the animal care control facility. Improvements necessitated by the upcoming facility renovation are anticipated to encroach upon the pasture area, thereby leaving less land to support service delivery into the future. The ACC has no other dedicated property or facility to render this service. Although the additional acreage is not immediately necessary to sustain operations, staff sees the ability to acquire the abutting 3.3 acres of land as a rare opportunity that would afford a possible solution to this emerging constraint and otherwise provide flexibility and reduce the impact on operations for the future operational growth. Staff became aware of this opportunity when the seller openly advertised the subject property, and in coordination with the seller proceeded to secure two appraisals in order to inform a potential recommendation to the board. The subject property is listed for $4,700,000. As this is not a planned expansion project, budget for the same has not been approved. If the board authorizes staff to negotiate acquisition of the subject property, the same would be funded from county reserves. If negotiations prove successful, staff will bring back at a later time for board's approval an agreement for purchase and sale.
Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
You had stopped her. Is that the end?
Yes.
Okay. So I had a few questions, so thank you. The, for those of you that don't know, my stepmom was actually clinical manager there for over 30 years. So I'm very familiar. I've recently done another tour, and I have to tell you, wow. I really think we could better use these dollars in updating that facility and maybe potentially paying our staff there and/or the veterinarians that are there a more competitive wage. From what I understand from the directors, they're having a problem putting out, getting more people in because they are not competitive in a market that is marketing jobs. So I don't think this, at this time, is the best use of those dollars. If we're going to spend that kind of money, I really think it needs to go towards upgrading the current facility. And that's just kind of, and if you'd seen it, you'd know what I'm talking about. Thank you.
May I?
Thank you. Commissioner Woodward, you're recognized.
Did you want to answer? I just wanted to share, nothing else, that we do have a renovation project that is part of the ISD plan. It's out on fiscal year late '26, '27. We were authorized by the Board of County Commissioners about a year and a half ago to conduct the first phase of the design process, which we have now done. And that's basically the phasing under design and the expansion that is going to take place. Regarding this item, I think it's important to highlight that as staff, we have no discretion when it relates with real estate acquisition. So whenever we come across an opportunity, we need to bring it back, right? And receive direction. And I will argue that's just what we are doing. That opportunity is out there if it is of interest to the board.
All right. Let's see. County Administrator, and then we'll have Commissioner Woodward.
We're happy. I know that the board has changed, and the prior board did give us specific directions. And we had workshop after workshop on this particular item and the expansion, renovation and expansion of the facility. So it might be helpful if we brought that back to this board to share, or we can meet with you individually and share the, what's in the plan that has already been approved. Because we are expanding and we are improving. Actually, we're going to be air conditioning areas within the facility, et cetera. Part of the Evergreen study did look at salaries for those positions as well. We are challenged with any kind of doctor, whether it's a human doctor or a veterinarian. So we're looking at all of those. They are rare. It's not enough of them. So we, of course, have to weigh the balance in what we're offering. And so we are looking at them. We are making exceptions for veterinarians and moving forward. But again, it's a balancing act on what we can pay.
All right. Commissioner Woodward.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I also did the tour, and I was, I opening, I, my dogs are my children, so I'm very much an animal lover. And I did want to know, I was shown the plans while I was there for the future renovation, and it was told to me at the time that acquiring this parcel would help with the renovation. But then there was also a potential for a future clinic site for our residents who maybe can't afford to take care of their animals, or, you know. Was that a part of the future acquisition for this, not just as a temporary spillover, but a real future part of the plan?
We see this as an opportunity to accommodate a few things. Accommodate growth into the future, as that may be defined. And at this point, we don't know what it may until five, 10, 15 years down the road. We see it as an opportunity to accommodate a site that is constrained. It's not needed for operations right now, right? But if we were to acquire this property, it gives us the flexibility to manage the phasing differently. So what you have on the slide right now is the phasing under the current plan when construction starts. And the reason we're phasing is because we need to play within our box, right? We have a site that is constrained. We have operations that need to continue to proceed. So we're phasing construction throughout to make sure that both things can coexist. So it does bring an opportunity to accommodate both needs, as well as the opportunity to accommodate that service provision of pasture land and different type of animals that they have accommodated to the south. The clinic and expansion, an additional building for the clinic is not part of the current design, but nothing precludes that this board might in the future decide or direct staff to pursue the same.
Where do we stand on the beginning of Phase 1 of this project?
This is budgeted appropriation is scheduled in fiscal year '26, if my memory doesn't fail me. So about a year and a half ago, we came with a full study as to different things that could be done with ACC, right? With the animal care and control facility. And three, four options were explore, okay, which included renovation, demolition, expansion. This board decided, taking into consideration the overall cost for each one of those and the requests that have been received from the community and the recommendations from staff to go with what I'm going to call a major renovation. So it's basically a renovation and an expansion of the facility. And that's what you see right now on the slide. At the time when we came with that workshop item and requested direction, one of the things that we asked from the board and the board approved was, since we know there is some delayed maintenance that has been put on hold just waiting for the future of this facility, allow us to proceed with design to a point where we can better define what we can go ahead and implement without wasting money, right? We didn't want to put in maintenance dollars to then turn around in three, four years and demolish what we had built. And this board authorized us to do so, and that's why there's an initial design first phases in place. We took it to a point where a line could be easily drawn as to work, and we invest in continued maintenance until the project is funded for construction. Makes sense?
All right. Vice Mayor Sacks, and then Commissioner Baxter.
We all love animals, and we are in sore need at the animal care and control. During COVID, everybody ran out and adopted a little companion as they stayed in the house. After COVID, but a lot of folks went back to work, and the little dog or the little cat was there alone and became a burden. Dog food has gone up. I can tell you that for sure. Dog food has gone up tremendously. And so our animal care and control has seen a flood of new dogs who were left there because their parents, their family couldn't afford to feed them anymore and really didn't need them anymore. And these are domesticated little dogs. So it is a, it is a, you know, it's just painful. So what we're doing, folks, is I've arranged to have a tour there with animal care and control. Ms. Steele is going to be supervising that. So that, along with me is going to be some private benefactors. We have a lot of very philanthropic people in this county. And they take care of their dogs. My goodness, I wish they could adopt my kids sometimes, you know? They do a marvelous job. So what I'm planning to do is this, and I am, did you get them? Good. Mosquito control is what we need. So anyways, what we're going to do is I'll bring to the board with Ms. Steele's and Ms. Baker's permission, a forecast of how much we need, how much the private partnerships can put together to help out with our little furry friends and make sure that this is a, that our animals are kept in the proper way. This is Palm Beach County. We should not have animals kept without proper air conditioning or ventilation or exercise or anything else. And I welcome everyone. I wanted to have everybody to come with me, but the lawyer said we can't do that. So we'll give you a report. But the most important thing is that we help our little animals and that we take care of them as we should here in Palm Beach County. This is what we should do. This is what we will do. So I thank you, Ms. Me and the whole staff for doing this. We need to shed a light on this. Whatever land we need, I am sure that the land that is right up against a turnpike, which is, I think, is what we're going to be looking at purchasing, is probably, we can get the best price possible because it's probably not worth, I don't know, the marketable, fair market value of land right up against turnpike that abuts an animal care and control facility. But I'm sure that it's me will do your best to get the best possible price. But I'm sure that it's me will do your best to, to get the best possible price. But yes, this is something that has to happen now. Well, I'll bring it before the board. We'll take care of our people and our little animals there. Thank you, Ms. Me. Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. A few questions. Was this, it had been mentioned, was this previously funded and then, I guess, not funded by us?
No, if we're talking about the acquisition, the acquisition has never been part of a plan. It's just an opportunity that became apparent when the owner decided to sell the property. Okay, so the acquisition of the property is not. The project is. The renovation project is.
I'm referencing the renovation and acquisition, or the refer, correct.
The, the renovation.
Was that previously funded?
And remains funded. What may have changed through the years, through the workshop, was the extent of the work. So when it was initially funded many years ago, it was meant to be, I'm going to call it a minor renovation to the facility. Staff was tasked, my predecessor at the time, actually, was tasked with conducting, getting a design firm on board and conducting a study to determine what could be done and should be done with the facility, okay? That company was PJAL. They team up with a specialized design firm. We came back to the board with a full report and options on what could be done. And this board, each one of them with an associated estimate. And this board provided us direction, which resulted in an increase of the initial funded level.
And there was number, the number of 45 million, I guess, was out there, and they said that it didn't actually end up happening. So I'm just kind of trying to figure out why. Was there a previous funding of a renovation? Has it changed the phasing? Because I'm getting different information.
Yeah, so we had different levels, right? Depending on the level of renovation, you had an associated estimate from very basic, very just, I'm going to call it a minor renovation as well, to full demolition and build new, okay? And we had therefore an spectrum of associated estimates. This board directed us to pursue what I'm going to call a mid-ground. It was basically a major renovation with expansion and then provision of air conditioning, air-conditioned kennels, which was an issue back then when we brought the study back, okay?
Also, do we have several private partners that help take in animals when we are full?
I believe we do, but that is really stepping outside my area of expertise.
Yes, we have partners that we work with, and there are a number of them, including Big Dog Ranch, including the one in Boca. So we have a number of them that we partner with. They come in and they take certain types of dogs, and they do their things. And, and then we, we keep the others. And so we've been able to successfully adopt dogs out. But again, we had a, a number of them returned. And so we're looking at trying to minimize any euthanization of them. However, that does periodically occur.
I, my next question. So instead of funding for more clinic space, because where does it stop? Let's say we purchase this, let's pull this through. We build a building, we fill it with animals, and then we run out of space again, and then we fill the next. So to me, a private partnership with individual clinics seems to make more cost-effective sense for the county. But also on Commissioner Sacks's point, which I did like, was that I wanted to bring up on those private partnerships, they do get a lot of funding from entrepreneurs and from philanthropic works to bring into their projects. The private partners do. We at the county, we don't. So to my knowledge, and if it's different, please tell me. But this would give them, I feel, more opportunity for fundraising, so this is not a taxpayer burden. And that's just kind of what I've been working with and the information. So if something is wrong, please tell me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. I don't see any other lights lit. This is, so this would be to direct staff to go out and negotiate. It would still come back to the board for approval, depending on, well, depending on, not depending, but with whatever information they come back with. So is, is there any other questions? If not, is there a motion on this item? We have a motion by Vice Mayor Sacks. We have a second from Commissioner Bernard. And before, just FYI, I do have a kitten at home right now that was pulled from Animal Care and Control, had some very difficult starting of its life. And, but it's going, it's doing well, and we're always happy to help, help out. And so encourage everybody else to, if you can, be a foster, whether it's for a young animal or an older animal. Both the Animal Care and Control and our facilities or nonprofits that help animals can always use additional help by families that are willing to take in additional animals. So with that, Commissioner Moreno, you're lit.
Thank you. Excuse me. I see the need for the expansion. And if it were a perfect world, we would get the land, and we would start the expansion tomorrow. What I would like to see is, one, Commissioner Baxter is absolutely correct. From everything I've heard, and I've had a lot of calls and complaints about Animal Care and Control, that's not, that's not what we're talking about today, but it helps, it, it's what helps us make our decisions. We do need to figure out a better way to fund the staff that's there. If we were to get this land at a reasonable price, because this is just, this was just industrial land. There's nothing else that can be done on this land. I don't know, is the zoning industrial on this right now? Thank you. We need to speed up the expansion. I mean, 2026 doesn't help us today, and we are in, in probably the worst position we've been in in a very long time because of COVID and because of, of animals being brought back to animal care. And, and our staff, and I'm sure staff in, in the other offices, have heard lots of, lots of complaints about Animal Care and Control. Again, that's not our purview, but we need to do a better job of getting, of delivering service. So while I wish I, while I would, I would like to say no to this, I think the opportunity doesn't present itself very often that we can get this land. So I, I will vote in favor of it. But I would also like to see if there's something we can do about moving the renovation up, especially if we can get this land. Maybe the renovation takes a little different concentration. I don't know. But I would, I would suggest we try to move the renovation up from 2026. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other lights lit. Any further discussion on this item? All right, I will, question will be called. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so we, this will be seven to one. Commissioner. So, I'm sorry, six to one. Thank you. I can't add this morning. Six to one. Commissioner Baxter in opposition. All right, thank you very much. This is now on 5H2. This is to purchase some property up in, looks like it's all in the north end of the county. Anyone need a presentation on this item?
We have one, oh, sorry.
Commissioner Baxter, you'd like a presentation? Okay, all right. We have a presentation on these purchases.
Certainly. Good morning again. As you know, during the, excuse me, during the past months, we have been bringing these items for acquisition within Palmar, the Palmar area. This item recommends approval of six different documents, an agreement for purchase and sale, and memorandum of agreement for the purchase of three different parcels. The first one, a 1.3 acre parcel of vacant land located north of Indian Town Road and east of Beeline Highway from Diane Malkowski, and I apologize if I didn't pronounce that correctly, and Edmund Malkowski, for $20,150 plus closing title insurance and recording costs estimated to be $515. And then the associated memorandum that will be recorded in the public records to provide notice of the agreement. Then an agreement for purchase and sale of a 1.2 acre parcel of vacant land located north of Indian Town Road and east of Beeline Highway from Wayne with Junior and Tracy, Tracy McQuestion for $18,600 plus closing title insurance and recording costs estimated to be $500. The associated memorandum, and then an agreement and purchase and sale of a 1.3 acre parcel of vacant land located north of Indian Town Road and east of Beeline Highway from Stephen Delaware and then Delaware for $20,150 plus closing title insurance and recording costs estimated to be $515. And then the associated memorandum that goes with it. On November 2, 2021, the Board of County Commissioners approved a fiscal strategy for the spending of the American Rescue Plan Act funds, the ARPA funds, which included an allocation of about $4 million for the acquisition of environmentally sensitive lands. The parcels that I described before are interior parcels located in an area known as Palm Beach Heights, part of the Palmar coast side. Appraisals were obtained by, from Anderson and Carr, Inc., and M.R. Ford and Associates, Inc., who assigned a $50,000 and $16,000 per acre value for interior Palm Beach Heights parcels, respectively. Calaway and Price, Inc. reviewed the appraisals and concluded a reasonable aggregate value of $15,500 per acre for interior Palm Beach Heights parcels, which is the basis of the offers. The agreements allow for the county's due diligence review of the parcels within 45 days of board approval. The county will pay title insurance policy premiums, closing and recording costs estimated to be $515 for Mikolski and the McQuestion parcel, sorry, the Delaware parcel, and then $500 for the with McQuestion parcel. The Environmental Resources and Management Department will perform pre-acquisition environmental assessment for the parcels prior to closing. Bandary surveys will not be obtained for any of the parcels due to their remote locations. Environmental Resources and Management will be responsible for the administration of the parcels. All costs related to the acquisition will be paid from ARPA Response Replacement Fund. And these acquisitions, as typical, need to be approved by a supermajority vote. So this concludes staff presentation. We'll take any questions as to the property.
Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you. And when this was initially presented, I love the idea of conservation land. And I know we have im-preserved land. We have thousands of acres not far from this. I had some recent communication with some of my constituents, residents, who actually own lots in this area. And the concern was that if we bought up all the lots, that they would eventually, and if they, I guess, sold theirs, would no longer to have an outside space for their family, for camping and outdoor activities. And that concerned me. So I just wanted to see where we're headed with this.
So I will make one comment and then let my colleague Deb Drum answer as to the environmental relevance of these properties. But I think I need to highlight, this is a willing seller program, right? So the county is not directly pursuing any properties, saying, we have the funds. If you want to sell to us for, so that we can preserve the land due to its environmental value, we're here and we do have funding to acquire the land from you. That said, is certainly, these are certainly parcels that carry an environmental value and relevance, and no one better than that to speak us to that reason.
Mayor, may I follow up, please?
Sure.
So once we have everyone willing to sell, sell, let's say, you're saying, if they sell it to the county, that's when everyone would then be, or no one left there, because we've bought every individual parcel that goes up for sale, then we would transform the area and they would no longer have a place for outdoor activities?
No.
Good morning. Deb Drum, Department Director for Environmental Resources Management. There is not currently legal access to that area. So if somebody is accessing and camping in the area, that is not, there is no survey. There's a very, very high chance that they're trespassing because it's very difficult to tell where the property boundaries are because no one's ever done a really detailed survey in the area.
On that, just one question real quick. So then how are we buying them from people, individuals, if they're not allowed to be there?
Well, you're acquiring from willing sellers.
This is what I'm saying, but there's a seller who has property there. You're saying they're not allowed on their own property?
And they are the owners, right, of the property per papa. And they can use the property as any owner can, in whichever way they deem a property, as long as it's compliant with regulations. And they are, at this point, willing to sell the property to us, right?
But she said that they're legally.
There's a legal description associated with the acquisition of properties. And so that is part of the process that PRIM oversees to ensure that that transaction is above board and that we have clean title when we acquire properties. So that's all a very important part of the acquisition process. That's different than people having access to property or using properties out in the area as a whole typically. Access in that area, I mean, some people can go, and maybe they know exactly where their property is. They can go out and access their property, but what we're seeing out there is something different than that in a lot of cases.
So people are using their area, you're saying, not for camping?
They're using their area for camping. They're taking ATVs out, and they're impacting wetlands on other people's properties. And so they're not just staying contained on their properties. There's also illegal structures going up, not in our county. Just to give you some context, this area is about, it's just over 36,000 acres total. Less than 1,000 of that 36,000 is in Palm Beach County. And so a lot of the access that we're seeing is really in Palmar area and the, in Martin County. And they are currently looking at code enforcement violations for illegal structures, buildings that have been put in, wells that have been drilled, septic tanks that have been dug.
In this area?
Not, not in our county, in the northern part of the county. And so that's where the majority of the camping and the access that you're, I don't know where your constituents have property or where their concerns are. I don't know. I don't know. That'd be happy to talk to them.
The overall goal is to get all those people out.
Our goal is to acquire the property for environmental purposes, including groundwater recharge and restoration of the water flows to the Loxahatchee River. But we've been in partnership in this for almost 20 years with the state of Florida. And one of the stated goals is all to, also to increase natural resource-based public recreation and educational opportunities. So the idea for all of our natural areas, we have public use facilities in the majority of those public, of those natural areas. The idea is to have compatible uses for properties, for natural properties that we've acquired. And so it's not to shut people out, it's to have appropriate uses in, in the areas. Right now, there is a lot of illegal uses occurring in this area, but not in our county. We haven't, we've been lucky that we haven't seen a lot of those things in our county.
But can we just stay on this county because this is what we're voting on, please? So are we seeing illegal activity in our county?
We've had some reports, but we've investigated them and haven't found anything.
I mean, so that speaks for itself, does it not? I mean, if our, if we have people who own land and they're being responsible and they're not doing illegal things, I just, I worry. It seems there's a certain group of people, let's say, that have been kind of targeted by the county, whether, I mean, off-roading, ATVs, you said, or camping, or whatnot. Like, just because we don't understand that is their fun and they purchase property out there, and maybe they're not staying in that one acre, but we also haven't confirmed, unless you have complaints from people who own land there as well, of them being on their land. To me, it was kind of presented as they share the land. There's never been a problem with crossing boundaries for any of the people that own land out there.
Well, that, that just isn't the case. I mean, I would, I would, I would respectfully disagree with that. I think that, you know, we have property out there that we purchased for environmentally sensitive lands. We own 289 acres of property out there, of 715 acres, and where people are destroying wetlands that we've, you know, acquired for environmental purposes. That is not being respectful of other property owners or adhering to trespassing laws. And so that, it's, it's a little bit different, like you said, than we had, than we've seen in the other counties. But it is in our interest to protect our properties that we've acquired for environmental resources. We would like to acquire the entire 715 acres so we could manage it and have appropriate. it and have appropriate public use in the area.
What kind of public use would be more appropriate?
Well, we're, right now, we're trying to focus, I mean, we're trying to focus on acquisition, and so, you know, we can determine what appropriate uses are in certain areas at a later date. Typically, what we've seen on our natural areas, we have equestrian, biking, hiking, those kind of activities. Camping on a few of the areas, we kind of, we like to cooperate with Parks and Recreation on appropriate areas for camping. We have the Ocean to Lake Trail that goes through many of our properties, where we have cooperative leases or relationships with other entities to allow those kind of, that kind of access and activities. So there is, there are appropriate uses that involve camping and, but not ATV use.
So do you think it's the ATVs that are causing damage to our wetlands?
There are, you know, we've gone out into the area to explore it. I think in our county so far, that hasn't been a really big issue as of yet. We've had some fences and gates knocked down, shot, you know, bullet holes through, that kind of thing.
I'm not sure how we know that they're damaging our property, and maybe you can inform me if you're saying that it's hard to survey the land and know exactly whose land is where. So how do we know they are damaging county property?
You can still get online and look at where the parcels generally are. You can see where the parcels are, and you can see, using an aerial photograph, whether or not there are ATV trails or that sort of thing. And I'm happy to come back to the board and provide photos and, you know, workshop item showing some of the issues that we've seen, some of the access issues that we have. There's issues with questionable easements of whether or not the public is actually, there's, some people believe the public is allowed to go into this, onto these properties, some people don't. The easements are not really clear. There's a lot of legal issues being determined around those issues.
Is there legal access for them to get to their properties?
Yes, there's legal access for them to get to their properties.
So why do we think we're, they are, I guess, accessing it illegally?
Only if they stay on their, their acre. That almost never happens.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Marino, you're recognized.
Thank you. We set aside four million dollars in ARPA funds for purchases, right, willing sellers, which will never, never buy seven hundred acres in there, correct?
It's, I'm sorry, is it okay?
Yeah. It's not enough to buy all that land.
No, probably, probably isn't, I mean, we don't know. I mean, there's, this effort isn't going on a really long time. There's a lot of confusion and communications out at Palmar about, about who's buying what and for what purpose. So willing sellers don't, they're not flooding into our doors right now. So the ones that we have, we're happy to have them, and we're hoping to generate more interest.
And I do know, for, for those of you that don't know, I actually am the chair of the, or whatever the title is, the Palmar Water Control District, and we have recently had issues. There was an eight hundred acre fire. Granted, it was not in Palm Beach County, it was in Martin County. There is a lot of pictures of the fire and assumptions about how the fire got started. We've been lucky in Palm Beach County that, I was on the phone with a gentleman last week about, you can't hear me, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm still recovering from whatever this is, and my voice is not very strong, so. For all intents and purposes, this land is passive activity, correct? There are no development rights on this land, so there was no pulling permits for a septic tank, a house, any kind of structure. In Palm Beach County, luckily, luckily, we haven't seen that, because I think we've been very specific about what are, what are the uses for that land. Excuse me. The works of the district have been degraded due to heavy equipment and vehicles being on that land. I think there's a difference between having acreage to camp with a, bring your tent in and camp and whatnot, to some abuses that have taken place actually further north in Martin County than in Palm Beach County. A workshop on this item would be great, some clarity on what uses are and what zoning is allowed out there would be great. You know, as, as the Palmar Water Control District, we have no authority over telling somebody what they can and can't do with their land. We only have the authority of the works of the district, which is very limited. So we, these discussions do come up at our board meetings regularly, and I had one gentleman threaten my life because he couldn't put a driveway in his property, because he was told he could develop on his land, and I said, I'm sorry, sir, but your land is, is not developable, and you cannot put a driveway on your property to a house that you cannot build. And yes, I did have my, my life threatened on that, and that's why we now meet up in Martin County, in their chambers, as opposed to in a small historic schoolhouse in Jupiter. So there is a lot going on in Palmar, we do need a lot more information. But getting back to the subject at hand, we put aside four million dollars in ARPA funds to purchase land in Palmar. These are willing sellers. We did send a letter to everybody and ask them if they wanted to sell, and if they did, please contact us, and that's how this sale came about. It's not that we are eminent domaining anybody's property, these are willing sellers, there is land out there, there are people buying and selling land all the time out in Palmar. So I am happy to make the motion that we approve the agreement for purchase with these three properties.
We have a motion by Commissioner Marino, is there a second? We have a second by Commissioner Bernard, is there any further discussion?
We have, we have one card.
We have a card?
We do. And we have some comments.
All right. Okay, who was first? Okay, Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized, and then Commissioner Woodward.
I, I love information, but I do not want, I personally do not want to workshop this. I find it's a better question-answer process in a private setting, in a private meeting with information, and maybe we can set that up, but for, until I get more information, and I guess we have a comment card, so I will wait for my motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Woodward, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. We set aside four million in ARPA, how much of that is left? What, how much have we actually spent so far?
If you go to attachment five of the agenda items, so far, this board has approved a total of eleven parcels acquisitions, which comes up to two hundred and fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. And that includes obviously the acquisition and the associated cost, and that doesn't include today's item.
Those are ones we've already closed on.
We have closed on one, two, three, four, five of them and have six pending.
All right, I guess we have a comment card?
Yes, please, Ms. Lisa Interlandi.
Lisa Interlandi with Everglades Law Center. I just want to thank you all for considering this item. Palmar is a really important area, that's an area that is critical for restoration of the Loxahatchee River, and in fact, the land that is in this area is one of the components for Loxahatchee River restoration. So it's one of the reasons why it's really important that we go ahead and continue moving forward for these acquisitions. This has been an identified area for acquisition by the state since nineteen, by the state and the county, and Martin County, and the Water Management District, working together, have been working to acquire this land since nineteen ninety-two. So the fact that there's seventy-five percent of it, or almost seventy-five percent of it, I think, acquired, is really huge, because we are getting there and making big progress. But the county needs to just continue on. I just wanted to kind of emphasize that this is totally willing seller acquisitions. Even after the county acquires all the land from willing sellers, people who own private property will still be able to recreate on their private property. It's just that what's happening, just because of the nature of the use, is that it's hard just to recreate with ATVs on your one acre. I mean, people just want to go off of it, and I understand that, but in this area, there's public lands that have been acquired by the state, the county, and the South Florida Water Management District for restoration, so it's really not an appropriate area for that kind of use, particularly where it's impacting wetlands, which does happen a lot, unfortunately. I know we don't want to talk too much about Martin County, but it is an absolute wreck what's happening there. I've seen horrible pictures of extreme destruction, building that is totally not allowed, and I think that Palm Beach County is doing such a good job by moving forward with these acquisitions, because that didn't happen in Martin. They haven't been acquiring property there, and to the same degree that Palm Beach County has. And that's why Palm Beach County is, I think that's one of the reasons why we're not seeing that there, is because we've just gotten a jump on acquiring land and making more progress with that. I also just want to say that this is really important for restoring the minimum flows and levels to Loxahatchee River. That's something that we can do by putting more water through this area, as has always been intended, so that we don't have to have necessarily a deep storage water reservoir on Mecca Farms, because that's the other thing, that's the other part of this, that, you know, we want to send as much water to the river as we can without having to have high-level, above-ground reservoirs there. Of course, we want water storage on Mecca Farms, we don't want to see that become a deep storage reservoir in order to get this water to the river. So we want to use all the natural methods that we can. So I want to thank you guys for considering that. Commissioner Marino, I just want to thank you for your service on the Palmar Board. I used to go to those meetings for a long time, and I'm not surprised that their tensions have always been very, very high, so I'm not surprised that you're getting that kind of attention for your work there. But if there ever is anything that I can help you with, please don't hesitate to reach out. We are very dedicated to preserving Palmar and getting that area restored, so please, if there's ever anything, don't hesitate to give me a call, we will come and work on it with you. So thank you all, and I hope that you all vote yes on this item and continue to vote yes on these items as they come forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Sax, you're recognized.
Ma'am, excuse me, I wonder if you'd come back to, we have your name, but could you tell us what interest you have in this, in this land acquisition?
Sure, sure, sure. Well, I mean, I don't have any private interest. I'm with the Everglades Law Center, which is a not-
I'm sorry, so you're an attorney with the Everglades Law Center?
Yes, I am an attorney with the Everglades Law Center, which is a not-for-profit organization. We have been working in Palm Beach County for over twenty years. We work on issues that are really important to Everglades primarily, or other development and growth management issues. We don't have any private interest in the matter, it's just that Palmar is a critical environmental resource, and we want to see the land acquisition there continue as rapidly as possible. We'd like to see it moved up. Just last year, the county went to the State Land Acquisition Task Force, I forget the name, but Restoration Council, whatever, to ask that it be moved up in terms of the state's priority, and it was moved up significantly, maybe not as far.
Thank you, thank you. No, 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 I'm not done.
Oh, okay.
So, giving a microphone to an attorney, and this is what happens, right? Okay, so you're an attorney and you are paid by the Everglades?
Yes, I'm the, I'm the, I've been the longtime executive director of the Everglades Law Center, I'm now-
You are paid, just, just-
Yeah, I'm paid.
Just answer the question, just answer the question.
Yep.
So you're paid by, by this group, by this legal group?
Yes, by our not-for-profit organization that I am the director of.
Are you a lobbyist, as well as an attorney for them?
Um, yes, I am a registered lobbyist.
And you're cer, and you, you've registered as a lobbyist with the county, I'm sure?
Yes.
Very good, okay. I just wanted to know, and you were speaking on behalf of your client.
Um, yes, I am.
That's it, thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, no problem.
Commissioner, let's see, where were we? Commissioner Marino, then Commissioner Baxter.
Thank you, I just wanted to say too that Palmar, as an ecocite, has been on the Florida forever, I think that's what Ms. Interlandi was referring to, is the Florida Forever List. So in the state of Florida, they have areas around the state that they designate important to the state, and for this purpose, we are, like, Deb, you can correct me, seventeenth on the list in the state? Twelve?
We used to be the first number one in the state, and then it dropped down to seventeen, and now, due to our efforts to explain the project and the importance, it's moved up to thirteen.
Okay, thank you. So that, I just, I wanted the board to know that, you know, it's not like we're just buying land indiscriminately, this actually has been a site that has always been in the eyes of the state as an important piece of land in this part of the county, especially because it does support the Loxahatchee River, which is one of only two wild and scenic rivers in the state of Florida. So, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you. And on the note of having a private meeting and getting more information, I would like to just make a motion to postpone this till a later date, so we can get, and I would like to get more information.
All right, so, I guess this is, you're making a substitute motion? We have a substitute motion to postpone item five H two? Is there a second?
I, yes, I, I don't know enough, there's so many competing interests in this, that I just don't know enough to make a decision, yea or nay. So I would agree to postpone it, and I'm sure Deb Drum, I have a lot of respect for you. Give us, I need more information, I, this is, this has opened up a can of worms for me, I don't know this area, and I need to know this area before I take a vote. So I would second the motion to postpone if we could.
Okay, so we have a motion, we now have a substitute motion to, Commissioner Woodward, you're recognized.
Can I ask if we're postponing for more information? Does that mean we're going to do a workshop, or is this meant for each of us to get information individually? Okay, one last question. When this was brought to me, I was told, I don't know when the act happened, but at some point in Florida's history, or maybe federal history, it was put out that we could sell like acre parcels of land out in Florida, and a lot of people bought these acres, not knowing anything about the area, not knowing where this land even was, there's no roads to it, there's no development rights to it. Is that part of this parcel, is that part of that land acquisition that happened decades ago? I don't know how, when it was, in the fifties maybe?
So, so yeah, early on, there was promises of a big development in this area, it was sort of the quintessential, I've got swampland in the, in Florida to sell you kind of deal, and a lot of people did, and it didn't have any development rights. It still doesn't, it has no drainage, it has no, it has no water control plan, it's all wetlands. And the item today, just to differentiate between some of those older items of what makes Palmar complicated, today's items are from, these are people that contacted us as willing sellers, they want to sell their property, and they want it to be conserved, they want it to be preserved over time. So today's item is just a willing seller acquisition, we have dollars that we've set as available for that purpose, they came to us and said, we want to sell these parcels. So that's what today's item is. These other issues, these more complicated issues about over time, how Palmer became what it is, and what those legal accesses are, is a separate issue than the one that's before you today, but we're happy to do whatever the board's pleasure is to do individual briefings or a workshop, we are happy to provide that information moving forward.
Okay, if I could, Mayor, I would just say, if, if I'm okay with doing a postponement to get more information, but I would rather it be in a workshop in a public forum where it's not just us getting information, I would think the public has an interest in this, and if we're going to do that, I would rather it be in a public workshop.
Commissioner Marino, you're recognized.
Well, I appreciate everybody wanting more information, and I'm glad you do, because information is important to make a decision. This is strictly a motion to purchase three pieces of land with willing sellers. This is not the first time this has come in front of the board. As Estima has already said, we've, we've done two hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of acquisitions already in Palmar. We are not taking away anybody's rights by acquiring this land, and I, you know, willing sellers come and go, and these are willing sellers, and I would appreciate the board supporting this agenda item. More information is a wonderful idea on Palmar, because a lot of people aren't familiar with it. I actually attended Palmar meetings before I was an elected official here at the county, so familiar with the angst that has been up there for a very long time. A lot of the land is owned by South Florida Water Management District, and a lot of degradation has happened on their property. We are not taking away anybody's rights to enjoy their land passively, and by buying this property, it is just putting three more pieces of, three more properties into something that we have already planned for a very long time. So I would appreciate the board's support in, in voting on this today.
Commissioner Baxter, then Commissioner Bernard.
I do appreciate that it is only three more pieces of land, but I wanted to confirm something, are we checking the MLS or the, or some site that they're putting this up for sale and then going after it? Or are they directly contacting the county?
Couple things, and we have been working in close coordination, hopefully can be seen. ERM has put together the approach as to how we're going to reach out to those property owners, okay? On the FDO prem side, we did two things, also in coordination with Environmental Resources, we sent a letter- We sent a letter to every single property owner within the area, and that went out to everyone at the same time. And then, based on phases of acquisition, we have sent targeted letters to specific owners within different phases, saying, you know, we have a willing seller program. We would like to acquire, based on the appraisals, if you're willing to sell, this is the compensation that will tie into your property, the proposed purchase price. The owners, upon receiving that letter, they have three things they can do. They can fully ignore it and say, not interested, not going to answer. They can reach out to us and say, interested, send me more information, send me the contract, we would like to see it. Or they can also reach out and say, not interested, you know, I'm keeping my ownership right, I don't want to sell. So that, in a nutshell, is our program, and probably if you think I missed something, feel free.
No, that's really what it is. We send out letters, and we ask the owners if they're interested in selling to us, to reach out to us for further information, and then at that time, we do provide further information, and if they are continued to be, show interest, we will then send a contract for them to sign and return to us.
Are we also letting them know the end, where this is headed?
As to conservation?
Mm-hmm.
And the goals, certainly. And that's the letter that Deb and I both signed, that went out, basically stating what was the purpose, how the program came to be, and how the program is being implemented. So it had the environmental component to it, and it also had the procedural component to it, which is the one FDO handles. Deb and her team handles the environmental component.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Marine. I'd like to make a substitute, substitute motion to approve item 5HD, A through E.
So we have a substitute, substitute motion by Commissioner Bernard?
I will second.
And we have a second by Commissioner Marino. So I think we're out of substitute, substitute motions at this point. All right. Is there any further discussion on this item? So this would be, the motion is to move forward with the purchase of these three parcels. Right, seeing no other discussion?
We need-
Can you do roll call?
We need a roll call.
We need a roll call. Okay, thank you, we'll do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bernard.
On the substitute, substitute motion, yes.
Commissioner Baxter.
I vote to postpone.
We didn't vote on the other two.
Yeah, you're, the motion is now to, in front of us, is to purchase, either to purchase or not. Back, Commissioner Baxter was a no.
Commissioner Bernard?
Yes.
Commissioner Marino?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Woodward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sax?
No.
Mayor Weiss?
Yes.
5I to nay.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 5I1.
Mayor, just for clarification purposes, I'm sorry, the board, I'm trying to figure out if the board wants us to bring back a presentation on Palmar or not.
All right. What's the preference of the board? You would, we have, one commissioner has indicated they would not, they want to do it in private, which is certainly always available. We've had another commissioner request that we do a public workshop on the item. Anyone, let me ask this. Does anyone have an issue with us having a workshop on this item? On, on Palmar? I should say, not on the item. Okay. So, it, and we'll also, and then I'll ask, and if staff then could also make themselves available to work with each office, and for personal presentations, and then, and when it's convenient, or timing-wise, we can get a, a workshop on Palmar.
Okay, all right, thanks. We'll set up a workshop.
We're gonna do it all.
And then we'll, we'll meet with commissioners who want to meet individually on this as well. We'll set that up.
If I may, Mayor and Administrator Baker, I just validated with the clerk, the motion said items A to E, and the item is items A to F.
So it's A through, so 5H through, A through F.
Okay, so we, the maker of the motion has clarified. Does anybody want to change their vote? No. Okay.
It's 5 to.
Thank you.
I think we're good. All right. Moving now, we are on 5I1.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, County Administrator. My name is James Green. I'm the Director for Palm Beach County Community Services Department, and I'm joined here today by our Chief, Chief Duran, who's our Assistant County Administrator, Deputy Director for Community Services, Taruna Malholttra, and our Assistant County Attorney, Helene Vist. Got a name right. So, today we're very proud to share information about the Community Services Department. Oftentimes, you know, we live in a fast-paced world, and oftentimes, we are, are not always aware or of the, the crises that arise, and, you know, when there's a crisis, when there's cold weather, we have our staff who are here to shelter our homeless residents. When there's an emergency, our staff, they're, they're working with the county and the team to staff our special needs shelter, and to make sure that our residents have all of their needs met. When there's a condemned building, our staff, we're, we're there to make sure that those residents are housed and that they're safe. When staff's electric, I mean, when electricity is disconnected, or when there's, you know, water services are disconnected, our staff, we're there. We're there for staff, for, for residents at their most vulnerable times, and we, I just wanted to pause to acknowledge that, because, you know, many of our staff who are on the front lines, they're there, they're hearing these stories each and every day, and they're doing everything that they can to comfort those who are in need, and to make sure that we can address those emergencies, and, and they do a phenomenal job. They make me very proud, and I just wanted to take a time to acknowledge that, okay? So, this is our leadership team. You know, we are a department of more than 200 individuals, and a very diverse department. More than 50% are African-American or, or black. We have nearly 30% that are, are white, and then we have about 14% of Hispanic descent, and another 6% or so of others. And the majority of our staff have been with the department for between zero and, and five years, and so we're relatively new, but working diligently to have a real impact on our community. Today, I just wanted to give you an overview of how the divisions and programs are broken down. Here you'll see Administration, where we have a section called Strategic Planning, Research, and Evaluation, that is focused on not just the strategic planning for our department, but also working with our public institutions to evaluate our programs more formally, and working internally to evaluate our programs, so that we can continue to focus on things that work, and divest in those things that don't. We have the Community and Volunteer Engagement Section that's constantly out at, in the community, making sure that the department and the services are known. We focus a lot on professional development through our Training and Professional Development Section, to make sure that our staff have the capacity to do the great work that is before us. Administration is also comprised of Behavioral Health and Substance Use Disorder Section, our Finance and Support Services, who do a phenomenal job of making sure that our vendors are paid on time, and that we're helping our residents to the best of our ability. And then our Contracts, Compliance, and Program Performance Section is there to work with those nonprofits that we contract with, and make sure that they are compliant to our state and federal and local provisions, and to make sure that we are performing to the best of our ability. And then these are some of the other divisions, Human and Human Services and Community Action. We work, we have a Homeless Services, a Homeless Prevention Section, and then we have Securing Our Future Initiative, which is, you've heard about, we have the Economic Mobility Summit this past December, really focusing on moving families out of poverty, and making sure that we have systems and programs that work together to create opportunities for our most vulnerable residents. We have an Indigent Burial Program that many people don't know about, but if families are not able to bury their loved ones, we're there to assist, and oftentimes, many homeless individuals are utilized this, this program, so, and so we recognize and acknowledge their existence and their contributions to our county. And we have the Farm Worker Program that's under Human Services and Community Action as well. Senior Services and Veteran Services, you've heard a lot about our senior centers and our adult daycare centers, some of the in-home case management services, and then Veteran Services, that make sure that our veterans are taken care of, that they're getting all of the benefits that are afforded to them, and that they are navigated to support services so that they can live a dignified life. And then we also have another section, HIV Services, which is comprised of our Ryan White Program, ensuring that individuals with HIV, that they have the medical treatment that they need, and the support services to become virally suppressed, to stay virally suppressed. We have the, ending the HIV epidemic, which is a relatively new initiative, really focusing on prevention measures, but ways to get people, again, to know their status and to get into treatment and to become virally suppressed. And we have the HIV Care Council, who's there to help govern and to provide direction for our HIV services. Our department has more than five advisory boards that are there to help give input on ways that we can better-
Excuse me?
-serve our residents? Go ahead.
Commissioner, or Vice Mayor Sax has a question.
Okay, sure.
Mr. Green, could you go back to the previous slide?
Uh, let's see, let me see if I can get that-
The very first one that you put up. Okay, yes.
This one?
Okay, I, I want to, I want to commend you, because I've called you a lot, haven't I?
Yes, you do, and we-
I have.
We love to hear from you.
I've got a couple of guys, a couple of constituents, who are living in their trucks. And where do we put homeless or shelterless folks? Where do we put them?
So we have our shelters, that we're able to send our homeless outreach team out to assess them, and then triage them into either our West Palm Beach Shelter, or the Fairgrounds Road Shelter out west, or the new one that we're building, and so that's-
So we only have two?
Three.
No, we're building one?
Yes, we have the one out in Pohlt.
We have three that are usable today?
Yes.
Because the one, because the folks that came to me, living in their cars-
Yeah.
-and trucks, were sent to the Fairgrounds one, which is really, was really the stockade.
Yes.
That's a, that's a, that's a prison, and not a prison, it's a stockade, with barbed wire still there. I've seen pictures of it. As a prosecutor, I sent people there, and now as a county commissioner, I'm sending homeless there. I think we need to, I need to learn more about where, please, somebody, if you have another place, let's speak, because I don't want to make this into a workshop, but I'm really frustrated, and you are, and I know, Mr. Green, you do everything you can to help me out with these folks, but I just got a text from one today, he's got a four-year-old kid with him. He's at the end of his rope, and I am concerned. So, can somebody tell me if we have another place, especially with a child, for someone? Because I'll text him back. I am tired of seeing pictures of where I send people as a county commissioner, with, with barbed wire fence, the round one, so that the inmates can't get out. That's the homeless shelter that we're using now. We call it the Fairgrounds. It's a stockade.
Yeah.
Can we do better?
Yes, we are, we are, and later on in the presentation, you'll see the facility that's being built in the Lake-
No, you said, we said three.
Right.
Okay, one, I thought, I was there at the groundbreaking of the one we're building.
Yes, yes, okay.
Ms. Baker, can you help me out here, because I'm frustrated?
Yes, I can.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mayor, you're, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, I've been, I have been to the Fairground Shelter. It is not a prison. I've been in prisons. It is not one. It has been redone. It is open. People have their privacy in there. They have kitchens, they have washing machines, they have, you know, it's a place that's safe, it's clean, and it's, it does not look like a prison. And it provides shelter to get people stabilized, to get them into supportive housing. But it's, it's a first stop for people to make, and I can assure you, Vice Mayor, I was there, I was there for the groundbreaking, or for the opening of that center. I've been back there, and it is, it is not a prison, it is no longer the stockade. It, we were able to use it in a short-term basis while we built our new center, but as you know, we were held up with litigation to get that pulled out of the ground, and if we didn't have that center, we'd have nowhere to put these people. And so, I just want to say that, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't the original intent to have to have it as long, but unfortunately, because of what happened with litigation, and it, it held us up in moving forward with the, the second center. But it is not a prison, the doors are open, people can come and go as they please, and I, I just, I just want to make that clear to the public.
Thank you, Mayor. This is what I was asking for, is where else. I, when I sent this, or when the county sent this man there, he took pictures. I have, I've been to every prison in the state of Florida, but, and I've been to the stockade. I thought we took the barbed wire off, but two weeks ago, the barbed wire was still there. And these are people who are, some folks who go there, who are shelterless or homeless, are not well. They've been to prisons, and when they see that, they think that they are in another facility, that is a Department of Corrections. Can we, this was two weeks ago, I saw the picture of, of the wire. Is the barbed wire removed in the last two weeks? Do we know?
No, ma'am.
Administrator, you're recognized.
It has not been removed. We're, we left that facility in that manner, because it's still, after we move our guests out and put them into the new facility, that facility will remain one of, part of our, our system that we, we may need to use. So we are, we did not intentionally dismantle it. We did, when we went to the board, to say we're gonna use this on a temporary basis, because if you'll recall, this was COVID, and we had to find somewhere to put a large volume of folks, that we moved from our park system, so that we could keep them safe. We first put them up in hotels, made sure that they were free of COVID, and then we put them in this facility. I'd like to take you out to the facility personally, so we can walk you through it. I, our prior FDO Director did a wonderful job personally, in making sure that that facility felt at home, made people feel like they were not in a stockade, a former stockade. And so, we, if I make no mistake, we should be doing a ribbon cutting, where is this me? Sometime this year?
Good morning again, and yes, we're slated for ribbon cutting later this year, fall of 2023 is where, what we're looking at right now, for the new facility, the HRC2.
Thank you, Ms. Baker, because you see, the stockade then is temporary, is a triage, and when we're finished with it, it'll go back to being a stockade-
That's correct.
-with the sheriff.
If, if we need it.
So that's why the barbed wire is still there.
That is, that is correct.
Now, where else can we send somebody who obviously has emotional and psychiatric problems? Some people do, that's why they're homeless.
Yes.
So do we have another place, Mr. Green, that we could send them, other than the stockade?
And, and the Lewis Center? And you mentioned that they had kids as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, we work with Adoptive Family, and Adoptive Family has 19 units. They're more like apartments, but they're right there off of Henrietta, so we sent, we utilize those, that facility, along with our hotels and motels, when that facility is full, to house our homeless families.
I'd just like to see, I, you know, it looks so good, homeless services, homeless prevent, homeless housing stability. I, I, maybe we don't have enough money in this, but I go to the churches now, because we are not, we don't have a facility for a man with a four-year-old kid, other than the stockade where we sent him and he left, but, but can, do I, can I have, can, we'll- But, but can, do I, can I have, can, we'll talk-
Yes.
Because they're texting me this-
Absolutely.
Right, okay, good. Good, very good. Thank you, I appreciate that. You've been very helpful, by the way, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Bernard, then Commissioner Baxter.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor Sacks, I sense your frustration in regards to if someone needs services, you know, where can we put them? I guess my question, if you're Mr. Green, is if the Lewis Center or the Gun Club Annex is full, do you have the ability to put that person in a hotel directly?
Yeah, we do work with, not directly, but we work with partners in order to place them in hotels, so.
So my question is, why can't you do it directly? Why do we have to rely on partners to, if Commissioner, if Vice Mayor Sacks's person has a kid, and if the Lewis Center is full, why is it that we have to go through a partner versus Community Services being able to directly providing that resource to that individual?
So that's definitely our intent and goal, and we are working with purchasing a department right now to add this as an allowable expense on our P card, or have set aside credit card for the department to do these transactions. Because any hotels, they do not want to enter into a contract with the county, and hotels require us to make an advance payment for that client.
When, Mr. Mayor, when there's an emergency, are you able to provide those hotels a P card?
Yes.
Yes.
During, during an emergency disaster, we are issued a credit card to be able to provide those placements, or we enter into some type of agreement.
So if you're allowed to do it during emergency, wouldn't the situation that Vice Mayor Sacks mentioned, wouldn't that also be considered an emergency where that person can be housed with their kid?
It's not a declared emergency through the county, right? Which authorized, which is more or less the trigger to, for us to utilize that process, but-
And can this board decide, can this board make a decision on whether or not, if there is an emergency, that, that your department can be able to use the hotel or a P card? I'm just, I'm not sure.
That we can address, Commissioner, when we determine that it is an emergency. It is, when it's you personally, it's an emergency, period. However, we have a section that deals with homelessness every day, so that's part of our, our program. If this board deems it appropriate, and you want to allocate additional dollars specifically to put people up in apartments, and we do special things for families. When we know that a family is involved, we take that extra step to make sure that they're together. And if we've got housing available, and we know something is available, then we work with our partners to put them in apartments. If you'll recall, you were on the board when you gave us dollars to purchase the apartment complex, and we're contracting with Adoptive Family now. So yes, we can definitely put them up with P cards, if that is this board's direction, on putting them up in hotels without it being an emergency.
You know, I-
It's frustrating.
I just, I just, I was dealing with a family on Friday, and, you know, a mother with four kids, and, you know, like, now you've got to rely on some other agency, some other partners, where, you know, like, you know, like, I don't really deal with these other agencies. Like, we have an issue that needs to be addressed, and now I have to rely on other departments, other agencies to help us, that, you know, I would prefer to have, you know, the leadership of James Green, the Community Services Department, to address the situation versus I have to rely on some other entity to, to help us.
Hear you loud and clear, and Mr. Green has a very good working relationship. These are our, when we talk about partners, we're talking about not-for-profits that we provide funding to as part of our FAA. And so you're funding them, and they're working with us. It's more economical for us, especially if they've got units already, to work with them in that manner. If we can't find housing, then yes, we definitely could work with hotels. It's not that easy working with hotels, because they, they're limited on how many rooms they're going to give us. And during the disaster, we ended up with one hotel at the end of the day that would even work with us to put up the homeless in their hotel. So we hear you loud and clear, we are working on a P card, especially when we can put a family in a hotel, and we will move forward with that within the budget that we currently have. And if we can find a partner in the hotel industry that's willing to work with us, and we need to come back to the board, we will come back to the board. Because it is frustrating when it's a family, especially kids involved in it.
Vice Mayor Sacks, then Commissioner Barnett.
You know, I, let's go back, let's go back to that previous slide, first one. It, everything looks so good, and I understand, it looks so good. I love it, until somebody calls me up. And like Commissioner Bernard was talking about, we, I don't know the churches that we fund. We fund churches? I am, I, no, listen, you're doing a great job. Well, we're not doing this. We're not, we're not putting, we're not helping people who are falling between the cracks. This is not an emergency here. We've got people who are, who are ill, mentally ill, they have kids, or they don't have kids, but they are homeless, and they are ill. I don't want to put them up in a hotel. I want to wrap services around them so that they can get, not just financial help, but they can get, they can get psychiatric and mental and, and help.
Yes.
So we're not doing this stuff here. We are, we have partners maybe with churches, but I didn't know that we finance, like Catholic charities and other Christian churches. We, if we fund them, I want to know who they are, and I want to know what they're doing, and I want to know how they can wrap their arms around these folks out there. Because this looks good until somebody calls me up. And then I call you, Mr. Green, and you try, and you do everything you can, but we don't have enough tools in our box here. And you know what? I'm funding turtles, and I'm funding wetlands, and I'm funding everything, but I got kids out there. So I think we need to get a little more information. I don't need a workshop or anything like that, but I need more information, because we're not doing this. And I've paid, by the way, for indigent burial program from my pocket, and I don't mind that. But I've never heard of anyone that, that didn't, that came out of a, of a shelter and died, and, and I've never heard of us burying somebody. So unless they're a veteran. Now, I think at some point, we need to help you more. So if we can have a little more of an individual chat, Mr. Green, because you do so much, but we need to come back and revisit this, because it's, it's not what it looks like. It looks great until somebody calls us, and then, and then we have a problem. And that's our count, this is Palm Beach. We should, we have, we should have more, and we should have better wraparound services. And I really, and I love being able to put somebody in a hotel, Ms. Baker, but these folks, they need a wraparound service. They need help.
We do provide wraparound supports, and we'll get into that as we move forward with the presentation. You'll see a lot of the wraparound supports and how the system kind of works. And there are gaps. There are gaps in the system, and there are some things that we can do to fill those gaps. But there are a lot of people that we are helping as well. And again, when we get through the report, you'll, you'll see the numbers and the number of people that we're able to support, and we'll, we'll figure it out.
Can I ask also that you send, can you send the Vice Mayor a copy of the Palm Beach Post article regarding the burial services that we provide? Because my office has participated in the, in those funerals.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Barnett, you're recognized, and Commissioner Baxter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Green, and the Community Services Department for all the work that you do to help the indigent homeless. I know homelessness is not particular to any one corner of this county. I know it's a problem everywhere in Palm Beach County, where I grew up in Boca Raton, to my new community in Green Acres, District Three, where it's particularly a problem. And I've been corresponding and working with some of our finest in the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office in District Three. You may know Jim Mackey, Candy Maldonado, who have helped our homeless citizens in Okeaheli Park, John Prince Park. And we talked about partners, I'm assuming the Sheriff's Office are one of your partners. And homelessness has touched all of our families, my family in particular, my brother, God rest his soul. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about your partnership with the Sheriff's Office, and in particular, those deputies who are on the ground helping, you know, it distresses me when I hear stories about high schoolers who are working as hard as they can. In my district, Lake Worth High School, sleeping in their cars at night after a long day of school, because they have no place to sleep. I hear about people coming home from a long day of work, no place to sleep, so they're climbing to the top of businesses, their own businesses. They can, they don't have a bed to sleep in, so they sleep on top of their businesses, out in the exposed weather. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about the work that you're doing with the Sheriff's Department, and in particular, some of those deputies who are dealing with homelessness face-to-face every single day.
Yeah, and we certainly appreciate our partnership with the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office, and Officer Mackey and his team, they do a wonderful job of working with us. We do provide transition beds at the Lewis Center, so there are six transition beds where law enforcement, in particular, can, can call and have individuals removed from the streets and, and then sheltered there temporarily until some other solution can be found. But we also work with other law enforcement entities across the county as well on this particular issue. The new facility will also have transition beds, it'll have an outpost for the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office there, on site. And we want to just continue. Anytime there's a fire, or where people are displaced, or individuals are homeless, we're constantly connecting with Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office to make sure that those residents can, can get the assistance they need.
Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Hi, thank you. We met yesterday, and I thoroughly enjoyed listening to the programs and the numbers, and I learned a lot yesterday from you guys. But I wasn't aware that you did have a burial service. And so I would like to point out some things to you. Unfortunately, I did have a sister who passed away of an overdose. And when my mother went to the coroner's office to see her body, she was turned down. She wasn't allowed. They told her, you have to contact a funeral home. And every single funeral home that we called was fifteen hundred up to five grand, just so my mother could get closure. And let me tell you, something has to change, and I don't know if that starts with the coroner's office, being aware of this program, but the rest of my family had to rally around my mother and pay for it for her. So I, as much as that sounds great, I think I, I absolutely think it's atrocious that anyone wouldn't be able to say goodbye to their child without paying, you know, fifteen hundred plus dollars. So something needs to change. I don't know what that looks like yet, but absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, all right, continue. So we have five advisory boards with the Community Services Department, and they work to help oversee some of the programs and services, and make sure that we're given the supports and creating the access for the services that I previously mentioned. And we'll be bringing a proposal to you to establish a Veteran Advisory Board in the near future. This just gives a picture of the Health and Human Services Safety Net and the partners that we do work with in various domains, so this Housing and Homelessness, Employment to provide services like transportation, food and hunger, health and wellness. Now, the county, the Community Services Department, we don't focus on all of those domains, but what we do is we have a Citizens Advisory Committee with institutional leaders from various sectors that come together. And we talk about how we can provide better access, make sure that funds are available, make sure that, you know, there's some accountability measures there, that we're coordinating with each other to work across systems to provide those support services, and to make sure that we're providing services in the least restrictive environment as possible. And so we are also talking about gaps that exist within the system, and we're having conversations with other funders to figure out ways to fill whatever gaps present themselves. And so this just gives a look at the strategic priorities of the board, and some of the programs and services and initiatives that Community Services offers to address those strategic priorities. There you'll see for economic development, you'll see that we have the Securing Our Future Initiative, really focusing on the workforce development aspect of that, and job placement. We also have Leading the Way Home, which focuses on the homelessness initiative, and we work with the Homeless and Housing Alliance, which is a group of about sixty to seventy nonprofit organizations, other governmental organizations that come together around homelessness. And Facing the Crisis, which is really, we're talking about our behavioral health and substance use disorders, and how we are working together as a system to address that particular issue. Community Services is a funder and a direct service provider in those areas. And we also provide HIV Services, which falls under the Public Safety realm. And so you can find out more about these, these comprehensive plans and initiatives at the various sites located here, securingourfuturepbc.org, where we're working with the families to move them out of poverty, thehomelessplan.org, and also Facing the Crisis. And so this just gives a snapshot of the various services that are provided throughout the department. And these are, these are not just numbers, these are, these are people. These are families that we are indeed impacting through the various services that are provided throughout our department. And it's so very important to know that those families are reaching back out to us, even though this is a huge county, obviously, we have a huge need, but those families do reach back out to us, and they are saying thank you, and they are sharing their gratitude and their thanks for the work that is happening in those various areas. And I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that as well. And so just to share a little bit more about our Senior and Veteran Services, and some of the things that are happening there, you'll see where we operate our senior centers and our nutrition programs to make sure that seniors have nutritious meals. There are about fourteen different sites across the county where seniors are coming together, they're eating meals, they're, they're talking, socializing, having fun, and that is something that prolongs their life, and it helps them to remain healthy. We also go into the homes, and we provide health, home health aid services to seniors, and deliver food into their homes. And we also have an electric assistance program specifically for seniors, to make sure that their electricity is not disconnected and they're able to maintain. And then Adult Protective Services, obviously, our seniors are very vulnerable, and they need those services. And then I mentioned the Veteran Services with the claims, and making sure that we can coordinate resources. And if you ever are around these areas, you can visit those senior sites and the adult daycare sites, and we'll be happy to show you around and introduce you to many of the seniors that we're helping with the services that are being provided. I did talk a little bit about the behavioral health and substance use disorders, and how we're funding organizations to make sure that they have places to go when they're in recovery. We want to make sure that they can connect to support services once they're out of treatment, so that we can prevent them from going back into deeper levels of treatment. And so we have a number of recovery community centers that are being established throughout the county, working to coordinate their services much better, and we're training our workforce and making sure that they have the capacity to stay up on the latest knowledge and skills that are needed in order to address individuals with behavioral health- and skills that are needed in order to address individuals with behavioral health and substance use disorders. And then HIV services, again, with Ryan White. And in the Syringe Services Program, we were the first in the county to help establish that program, and it's been very successful thus far.
And I can talk some details about some of our homeless services, and it may answer the questions which have been asked by the board. So the Homeless Intervention Services have a coordinated entry. So we have a universal phone number for, in Palm Beach County, where the clients can access the services. And it is not just for the clients, even the law enforcement has access to that number. When they call that number, it doesn't even go to the wait time for them. It directly goes to the navigator. And we have set aside beds for client services if a law enforcement has a dropout. So this coordinated entry system really helps us to prioritize who needs to get services and then also look at the other partners. So it's not just the county who's providing these services. There are a lot of nonprofit partners who are either funded by county or by other funding sources are providing the services to the client. The Rapid Re-Housing Program is one of our programs in the Homeless Intervention Services, and this was developed in 2016. So we do have clients who sometimes are experiencing homelessness, but they are not ready to go to the shelter. They have the means, they have the wages which allow them to pay or have a subsidized way of paying their rent. So those clients, we get them stabilized and provide them in the Rapid Re-Housing Services. We have a homeless outreach team, and we work in conjunction with City of West Palm Beach, Lord's Place, and City of Delray. And these are the folks who get dispatched when the call comes to the coordinated entry or when a call comes from the BCC or a call comes from any of the different ways. The call goes to our homeless outreach team and they get dispatched and they do the navigation and work with the client. One of the very innovative programs which we implemented a few years back is Parks to Work Program. And this is really to work with the clients, build the trust, get them wraparound services, help them improve their wage skills, and get them to work in our county parks. And we are also now expanding that with Lord's Place to engage the clients and then have them work in the culinary, culinary system so that they can obtain jobs. One of the important programs is the Housing Stability, is the wraparound services which we provide. The whole purpose for this program is to remove barriers and then to make sure that the opportunities are available for low-income families. So we work with Career Source, Palm Beach State College, a lot of vendors we have to help them get job trainings or learn a skill. And then we work them with their soft skills to, all the way to resume planning and resume writing to get them the jobs. In addition to that, we have a farmworker career development program as well, which helps us to strengthen their ability to maintain employment for the, when there's no season for farming. Indigenous Burial Program has assisted over two hundred low-income families with that. And the coordinated entry is not just for the homeless services. It's for any services which is provided in remaps of Health and Human Services can be accessed through that number. Just to give you a little bit more information on our coordinated entry system, we received more than two hundred thousand calls last year. So you can imagine how many people are in need of services and are able to access the services through our coordinated entry system. These are the numbers which are available for clients to access services. And again, this number is not just for the clients. Our case managers and our community partners access the same number to get our clients connected. One of the tools which we have launched is called Resource and Referral Portal, and that information is on our website. We all have limited resources. So if county is not able to provide that service, we do refer those clients to our nonprofit partners to make sure that we are maximizing and leveraging all the dollars which are available in the community. The Lewis Center is our, the HRC One. This was opened in July 2012, and this is a sixty-bed facility. And all the services included in this is navigation, wraparound services, case management, job training, and job placements. This is our Lewis Center Annex at Fairgrounds. This was approved in response to John Prince Park crisis. We worked in 2021, in 2020, actually, to open up this, this HRC Two. So we converted this facility and really worked together with the Parks Department, facilities, and other partners to place clients. At the peak of COVID, we had two hundred residents in John Prince Park, which we transitioned to our shelters. This is our Melissa Place, Lake Village at the Glades. This was opened in December of 2020, and this was partially funded by the CARES dollars. This is a non-congregate shelter which provides individuals a living space, and they have a privacy with a small kitchen in each unit. Currently, this one, this facility has forty-two bed facility. In our effort to end homelessness, we are working on opening up our HRC Two. And in that process, we will be closing down and transitioning the annex facility. We are also working to make sure that there are landlords who want to work with us because every client is not a fit to place in a shelter. We need more housing stock, and then we need more landlords who want to work with the population which routes through our department. We are also working with Section Eight to set aside the housing vouchers for the clients who are high on the priority list and they need to be on the permanent supportive housing. I do want to share our transition plan for the EDAP program. As you all know, that during pandemic, we received millions of dollars to provide rental and utility assistance. Since the launch of the program in 2020, June of 2020, we have served more than thirty-three thousand clients. And now we have less than six million dollars left in the program, and there is no new allocation coming our way. So what we are planning to do with the remaining six million dollars is to prioritize the clients who are coming through the eviction code system to help them with the assistance and keep them stabilized. And then also, we are seeing high, high cost of rental, and we are seeing an increased need for relocation. So some of those dollars will be set aside for relocation assistance. We have another initiative which we are working on, which will really help our residents, is the clients who are low acuity clients. The low acuity clients are, they are homeless, but their barriers are low enough, so they are not high enough to get into the shelter. The HUD requires us to prioritize the clients for sheltering. So currently, we have close to ninety-three clients who are zero to five in the acuity. So the remaining reallocated dollars from the EDAP will be used to place them, remove their barriers, make sure they are stabilized, have a stability plan, and get them housed. These are all of our sites for community services. In addition to our own CSD sites, we work with libraries, and we have staff at the libraries who can provide the assistance and help clients navigate how to get services. Again, our numbers for the call center is 1-833-CSDWILL, and this is the coordinated entry number which allows clients to access the services, understand what are the eligibility, how many times they can get eligibility, and different services which are available in the community. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I think we got them out of the way. Okay, all right. Well, I think we've got, we've got a couple more items. Oh, is there a motion to receive and file this presentation? We have a motion by Commissioner Moreno, a second by Commissioner Barnett. All in favor, all opposed. That motion carries seven to zero. All right, we have a couple more items. It's now twelve-thirty. We can, it's, I will, let's finish it up. Okay, let's see if we can finish up. All right, moving on then, we are now on to, I believe, on add-on item. This would be item five, would it be, five I two?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board, County Administrator. Our intent here today is to inform and seek direction regarding certain programs funded by the federal government and administered by the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. This is a very dynamic circumstance. Within the last ten days, we received notification which has caused us to come before you today. Florida Department of Economic Opportunity has reached the limits of their 2022-2023 budget appropriation authority. In our presentation, we would detail the effective programs provided options moving forward to include: suspend the programs moving forward pending the outcome of FDO's efforts to work with state legislature to provide additional budget appropriation authority, continuing the program without the certainty of funding from the state, modifying the program to limit the county's financial exposure. We would further like to make you aware that our legislative team is actively working with and having conversations with FDO, and they are showing some progress. However, their meetings that certainly do not mean we are certain that we will receive funding. So with that, I'd like to move Dr. Green for a presentation.
So we have several programs that's impacted by this phenomenon. Basically, the dollars that were allocated by the state, we encumbered a number of those dollars for our Community Service Block Grant, for our Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, where we provide electric bill services, for our LAWAP program, and for our H-PAC program. And so each of these programs do various services. So the Department of Economic Opportunity gives the dollars to local communities, and they provide us with budget authority to spend a certain amount. And then we utilize that, we come to you and we utilize that to make commitments on behalf of the county for past due electric bills, for past due water bills, and then we get reimbursed by the state for those dollars. And so their role for, it's the same, for the Community Service Block Grant, we provide various types of trainings and jobs, and we do provide emergency assistance through that program. For our LAHE program, same thing. Their role is to do, to apply and distribute the funds to us and allow us to address the crisis here on the ground. And you'll see that we receive about fourteen point eight million dollars for that program. And for our LAWAP program, which is very, very useful in helping individuals who don't have the water services connected, Palm Beach County receives another five million dollars for that. And so essentially, these services, we're suspending them for now until we can come to you and to get some authorization on how to address this particular issue. And we want to make sure that we can continue those services if possible, if you guys are amenable to that. And so I think we're gonna need, we're gonna have a deficit. I'll let Taruna talk a little bit more about what our deficit and shortfalls are, and then we can, we can seek your direction for that.
Before you go on, can you explain what, what happened at DEO, why we're in this predicament?
I think much like us, there's, there's an appropriation, like you have a spending limit. And somehow, they've reached that spending limit. They don't have the authority to expend additional dollars.
Did they make a commitment to Palm Beach County to provide funding, and now they're coming up short?
So what they do is they provide a dollar amount that they, they give us the budget authority to spend. So it's somewhat of a commitment, but they have, we have a contract and agreement with them to say that they can rescind that commitment if, for whatever reason, if something turns up. And what we're hearing, we don't know exactly why. They have overspent or they have reached their budget limits. We're hearing something related to the hurricane and some other things, but we don't know exactly why. But they have come back to us, and they have said that we've, they've requested that we provide them with the invoices that we've committed to thus far. And so we've sent that to them, and they're saying that we're gonna try to pay those. But for any services that we have not rendered, then they're not committing to anything between now and July. And so that's where the shortfall is and where we want to.
Is this only impacting Palm Beach County, or is this statewide?
All over the state, the entire state. Yeah, it's not just Palm Beach County. It's the entire state. And we're hoping, I mean, they've, they've been in touch with us a couple of times since this notification, and we're hoping within the next couple of weeks, we'll get some additional information that will help resolve the issue. But we, we don't know. We don't know what to expect at this point.
And how much is their shortfall statewide, and how much is their shortfall to Palm Beach County?
We don't know the shortfall for the state. We don't know the shortfall for the state, but for our community, they allocated twenty-one million dollars for the period of two years. On an average, between the LAHE, LAWAP, and CSVG program, we spent close to a little bit over a million dollars. So the shortfall until June, end of June, will be close to four million dollars because we haven't still received the money or the expenses which we have incurred for the month of March.
And is, has, is the legislature involved in this? Ed, I see you back there. Are they aware of this? Are they doing anything?
Good morning, Mayor. They are very aware of the statewide implications. The Department of Economic Opportunity legislative staff is currently working with both House and Senate Budget Staff to find out what can be done now, what can be done through the Joint Legislative Auditing Committee or Joint Legislative Budget Committee to try to maybe give them some extra dollars. But this is something that they are currently, this is currently being worked on in the Capitol.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner, Vice Mayor Sacks, and then Commissioner Baxter.
Thank you, Mayor. Those are good questions. So is this something that we're gonna get, we're gonna get the money back from after they fund it?
So, go ahead.
I think that's the piece of the same question. So we have submitted all the funding that we expended up to that deadline that they said, which I believe was April thirteenth. And so of that four million, there's a million and change that we submitted, and we anticipate reimbursement. So the remaining three million dollars is talking about the move forward to get to the end of the fiscal year. Again, the challenge for us is we have no guarantee, but it's very dynamic and fluid. That legislature is still gonna be in session for, I believe, another three weeks. So we have some hope that they'll reach resolution and find the funding. We just wanted to make you aware as soon as possible, hence why we had this add-on, which we've constantly made adjustments to, and I apologize for that. But we just want to get you the information as soon as possible so that you're aware.
I appreciate that. Now, if I could, Mayor, are we, and I'm looking at Ed and Mr. Bonlaren. We, our legislative group is very much aware of this, I would imagine.
Yes, ma'am, they are.
Okay, and has this been requested as part of our budget request, Mr. Bonlaren, to, we've got some good, we've got some good legislators here in this county?
So Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, when this issue came to our attention, which was very recently, this was last week, in a letter that was sent to the county, other counties, other not-for-profits around the state of Florida, we immediately asked our legislative team to go to the Department of Economic Opportunity, wanted to just kind of dig in a little bit more to find out what was going on, what they needed to do, where they might be able to find some additional funds. The feedback that we're getting from them is, obviously, they're very aware of it. They're looking for some additional funds internally to do that. They may need to go to the Legislative Budget Commission to do it, as Mr. Chase stated. But, you know, I feel like they're, they've got a big light on it right now, and it's just the path is very uncertain right now. And so we've run into some of these issues from time to time where you've got federal and state spending authority to do certain things, and then you get sort of a slowdown message that says, hold on, you know, we might have, you know, run out of some of this money as we try to regroup. But there's no guarantees in those kinds of things, and I think that was the prudence of this conversation coming to you to make sure.
Sixty-seven counties is gonna be shortchanged?
I don't know that the total of all the counties, but I mean, it's not-for-profits, it's local governments that all participate in these four programs that they're talking about.
So we're three million possibly in the hole on this, basically?
No, not necessarily. So we are in the hole for what we've encumbered. When we received this notification, we had already worked with and processed. When we received this notification, we had already worked with and processed a number of applications and encumbered some dollars. And so, we've sent the invoice for that amount to the state so that they can reimburse us, and we're hopeful that we'll get reimbursed. But we also are looking to move forward and continue to provide this service that our residents need. And so, that is why we're coming to you for that solution.
I appreciate that, thank you. Okay, we have, Commissioner Baxter, you're.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to thank you for putting this together so quickly and really helping the residents as much as I hope that led to this, our legislative body gets this all worked out at the state level. I, I think people really need energy, and they need water. I mean, that really is what this comes down to. And I do not want to be part of not allowing some gap funding for that regardless of what the state does. It's very important. So, I'd like to, you know, make the motion to approve.
We have one more. Commissioner wants to speak, and then, we'll take that up. All right, Commissioner Woodward.
Yes, thank you. This is, we're looking at a potential three million shortfall in the county. Do you know what the shortfall is statewide? Do we have that number?
We don't, but we'll get that number to you. We'll, we'll make sure that you get that.
Okay, so the three million that we're short now is what's already been, or this would, this three million would carry us through?
It would carry us through July 1st, yes. So, we're short maybe a little bit over a million that we've encumbered. We processed those applications, we've made commitments to FPNL and other vendors. And so, we've submitted the invoice to the state for that portion, and we're hopeful that we'll receive that. But we also want to continue to provide the service until there is a solution for this.
Very good. Thank you very much. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I'd second the motion, but I do have a question. I guess what I'm not sure is, are the funds that we're receiving coming from Tallahassee, or are they federal funds?
They're, they're federal dollars, and they're passed through the states as block grants and sent to local communities.
So, if they're federal funds, are they supposed to be allocated directly to Palm Beach County?
No, these are block grants that are passed through the state. So, there are some federal dollars that are, that come directly to the county and nonprofits like HUD, but not this particular program. This is one of the Health and Human Services programs that's given to the state in the form of block grants for particular causes.
So, Todd, I'll ask you a question. Is there a way for us to work with our federal folks to see if some of those funds can be directly given to the different counties?
Yeah, I mean, that's a pretty tall ask on the federal side. Most of these larger programs, our block ran it to the states. I mean, we were fortunate during the conversations on ARPA funding and those dollars where we got some of those direct allocations outside of the state purview to come to us. I'm certainly happy to look into it with our legislative team moving forward, but that's a pretty large tranche that they do in those block grants to the states, but we certainly will inquire, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you. I am, like Commissioner Baxter and Commissioner Bernard, I'm in support of this, but, oh, sorry, I'm cold. I'm, I've got so many different numbers here, I'm not really quite sure what the final number is. So, can you sort of break that down for us? Because you've also given us two options, one to fully fund and then, one to sort of fund. So, if you would spell out what the costs would be, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, so I'm gonna have Taruna share the, the options in terms of a modified version of moving forward and what fully funding this would cost as well.
So, currently, if we just provide the services as this level, currently, the grant allows to pay up to $5,000 of energy assistance for electric and $1,000 for utilities. So, if we go with that allocation, we would be in need of $2.7 million to maintain the same level of services. If we do the modified level of services and prioritize it, which we have done in the past when we get low on the grant dollars, if we do, can you do the next slide, please? If we do the modified level of services and serve and prioritize seniors, disabled, families with childrens under five, we are anticipating that we will need close to $700,000 to have the service, to provide those services until 1st July. And we will suspend the HVAC replacement program under the modified programming because we currently have done the HVAC for close to 200 clients, and it's a need, but then, that need can wait until the state release the dollars to us. For La WAP, we will do the same prioritization, and then, we will need close to $78,000 if we do the modified level of services. But if we keep it as it is, then we would need more dollars.
Looking at what's in the summary. I come up with $4 million.
So, so, like James mentioned, that we have submitted the request to state for the expenditures that has already happened for the month of March. We are current as of February, so we received all the expenses from the state as of February, but we have not received any expenditures for the month of March. So, that's a million-dollar shortfall, which we are not sure yet if we will get the money or when we will get the money. We have staff cost, you know, we have staff, currently 25 staff works on these different programs. That's an expense which we have to cover. And then, we have encumbered expenses which we have not paid out to the vendors, but we have made commitments. For example, the FPNL or the Palm Beach State College or the HVAC vendors who are replacing the air conditioning for the low-income families. And, and then, either we, if we go for the modified version of programming, it's an $800,000 need, or if we go for the current level of services, it will be, it will go higher than $4 million if we go with the current level of services. We are requesting right now to go at the modified level of services and prioritize clients. We are, because we also have some other grants which we are helping clients with if they are eligible on it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barnett, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Given the budget request options that were provided to us, I was wondering if we could just get clarification on the current motion on the floor, what the board's being asked to consider?
All right. Who's the motion maker?
To, forgive the wording, but basically, to approve the gap funding of $4 million.
You said per.
Because, yeah, they're asking for $4 million, correct?
Yes.
To approve that, to get funded, to carry us through to July 1st.
Thank you. And it was seconded by Commissioner Bernard? Okay. Are you clear, Commissioner Barnett? Thank you for asking that question, because I need clarity as well. All right. Is there any further discussion on this item? Well, Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
So, we would approve up to $4 million, and if then, if the reimbursement comes through, then we're sort of down lower now at, you know?
That's our hope.
Okay, all right. I'm good with that, thank you.
Let me just ask a question. It's a, to even ask it is sort of a strange thing, but if we approve this, would then the state say, well, you guys were able to afford this, therefore, we're not gonna pay you?
I, I don't anticipate that they'll say that. We, we don't anticipate them coming back with that response. I think there are a lot of communities out there that are just trying to figure this thing out and to keep things afloat. I'm not even sure if they'll be aware of the fact that we are making sure that our residents' needs are met, so. I, I don't anticipate that happening, no.
Mr. Mayor, I think we're supported by the fact that it's actually a federal program. Our challenge is maneuvering these dollars through the state, if I'm not mistaken.
So, so what you're saying is they, they, if I'm understanding correctly, and I don't want to drag this out, but they took the federal dollars, they allocated across, they, with each county or whoever they contract with, they allocated those monies out. Then, last, or a couple of weeks ago, they said, oh, we may, we, we did this incorrectly, and now, we're out of money. We've overspent our federal dollars, or we over, yeah, they've overspent them at that point because there's nothing left to allocate.
That's right.
And so, it's either up to the state to, to make it whole or try and get reimbursed, or try and get additional federal dollars.
And if we, if we do get the additional allocation once we do, we'll suspend the use of our avalourum dollars, and they'll go back into the general fund, and we'll then start utilizing the dollars that were reallocated.
I, I just want to clarify, state has not said that they have overspent the dollars. What they are stating that they do not have a spending authority to send the dollars to, to the counties yet. So, so, they do have the appropriation, looks like they have a spending authority issue.
I don't think I understand that, but I don't, I may never understand it, so. Administrator Baker, and then Commissioner Baxter, and then Commissioner Woodward.
If that is a concern, which I'm hoping the state would come back, and we are going to closely monitor the budget to see if they're gonna reassign those funds effective July 1, hopefully, they come back and reimburse us. But one of the things, if that is our concern, that they feel we will supplant dollars and then, they not reimburse us, we could continue to spend, monitor your budget, monitor the budget very closely, and then, clean it up at the end of the year. I don't, I don't, would not normally recommend that, but if that is a concern, then we could do that. But that is deficit spending, and I don't like deficit spending. But that is, that is one way to do it, and then, clean it up at the end of the year. So, they can't come back and say, we've supplanted the dollars, and therefore, you know, your point of saying, we don't need to reimburse you because you've already covered it. So, hopefully, we'll get a better answer from them. The safest thing to do, we could definitely move the dollars as we're asking. I have our, our latest balance. We, we have funding in our account, and so, for the reserves, so we could move it from reserves. It's available, the four million. We, that's normally what we would do. But again, I, your point is well-taken if the state comes back, but we don't know what they're gonna do. We have no idea.
And we can still do the modified version.
You didn't get that?
No, no, no.
Oh.
We're still on the spending authority question, what that means. Do they have the money, or they don't have the money?
They should have the money because FEDS has already appropriated the dollars for these block grants.
So, Mayor, what she's saying is that they have the money, but they've given it to other counties and not Palm Beach County. That's what I believe that they've done. So, through, they've given it to other hurricane areas that's been impacted by hurricane from last year, and that's why we don't have the money right now.
So, but that's not what they're, they're, they're also saying, if I, they say they have the money, but they don't have the spending authority.
Not to send it to Palm Beach County, but to send it to other counties.
But they told me everybody else is in this boat.
I'm just waiting to be recognized.
It's Commissioner Baxter is next.
I will let Commissioner Sacks.
Or Woodward, I'm thinking it's Woodward next, and then Baxter. Did I get it right? Is it, which one of you did I say was next?
I don't know.
It's not important.
I just want to say that being in the legislature, there's a monies there. It hasn't been released yet. If the federal grant, block grants, get to the states, which they will, hopefully, you never know. As, as Mr. Bonlaren said, there's no guarantees. But if they do release the block grants, they go to all the states, and our county will get the money. But in the meantime, as has been expressed here, let's fill this gap, let's get the services to our people. This is the most important thing, and I think that we can certainly afford it, and let's, let's get it done.
All right. Okay, so, let's see. So now, either Commissioner Woodward or Baxter, whichever would like to go first? Okay, Baxter, oh, Woodward.
Oh, sorry. Okay, thank you, Mayor, and Commissioner Baxter. My first question, it, it seems like, was there a block of money that was sent to the state of Florida? And then, every county, every entity that's participating in this has spent whatever was allocated. It doesn't seem like maybe there were specific amounts put, maybe per population. It was like a first-come, first-served. Is that sort of what's happened here?
So, let me, let me try to give you my understanding of, you know, we're, we don't, we're not there with the federal government, the state government. We have some limited understanding of how it works. Often, they're releasing dollars to, just like the state will say, okay, you, you have this amount of dollars, but you're only authorized to spend this amount for now, until we get, you know, the dollars, and then, you can spend more. So, I suspect that is similar with the federal government, where they have been authorized dollars to spend in the block grant, but not the total amount as of yet. The, the amount that they have been authorized to spend, they anticipated that it will last longer, but because of some of the effects across the other counties, they ended up spending it more, or whatever the case may be. But now, they've reached their budget authority as of now. But then, you know, I'm suspecting that when they get the additional dollars, then they'll be able to release, they'll be able to authorize us to spend more. So, that's my understanding. I know it's very confusing and convoluted. You know, we've asked a lot of questions from the state, and sometimes, they don't give us the response that we need. But that is our understanding of what's happening.
Do you, do you know, is this not just happening in the state of Florida? Is this happening to every other state that receives this money?
We're not aware of it happening in, in the other states, but it is certainly happening across the entire state. So, we know that other counties are impacted by this as well.
Okay, so I, I am concerned about the deficit spending that you mentioned. With the motion that's on the floor, is that to move forward in the future with the modified versions of what they were explaining, or is this to, to do it exactly the way it is now?
My understanding, but I will leave it to the motion maker, but my understanding is, is it leaves it.
The way it was currently, yeah, from the reserves and moving it over. But please, Administrator Baker.
Okay. I hate to have this discussion here because it's the nitty-gritty stuff that we do behind the scenes. We brought this so that you would be aware of what's going on. So, when we do budgets, we anticipate the revenue amount coming in. And for these programs, we budgeted what we anticipated the revenue would be. It's in our budget. So, I'm gonna say to the board that we continue the program because now, I've got the indication that you want us to continue the existing service. So, we'll go ahead and spend as though the revenue came in. When we get to the end, if we don't receive the revenue, you've already authorized us to do that transfer. And so, we'll do the transfer to clean it up at the end of the day. If we receive the revenue, we're golden, because we budgeted for it, and we're receiving it and have expended it. If that does not occur, then, at the end of the year, we'll make the appropriate adjustments.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
So, back, not to try to harp on this, but just some more clarification. The spending authority comes from the federal government to the state?
State of Florida.
So, it's a state who we're waiting on to authorize the spending of this block grant that you're talking about?
Correct.
Okay, just clarified that, so, thank you. And do you, because we know everyone's struggling right now. Cost of living in general on every single thing has gone up. Can that be, I guess, pulling dollars? People needing more assistance, I guess, would then burden the system with those dollars needed?
Yeah, the cost of electric services, utility, going up, yes, that absolutely would impact funding streams.
So, even if we did the best job of budgeting, state level, county level, I mean, we could still be seeing a shortfall?
Hopefully, it's not that drastic. They're more incremental in terms of the cost for electric services and water services. So. electric services and water services. So, we anticipate that this will get us to the end of this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Marino, you recognize.
Thank you. I know, staff, thank you for being so patient with us. There's just, we're working off of not having enough information. It seems like it's a theme today. But we gave the state our budget on these, on these programs and that's what we were anticipating getting back, correct? So, what we're doing now is finishing out what we already budgeted, but we thought we were gonna get money from the state. If the state determines that they have the money and then they now have the authority to sign for it, do we get reimbursed for all the 4 million or just the accounts payable that we're sending them?
So, based on Ms. Verdinia's plan, if we go with that plan, because we are not using GAAP funding from the county, we will continue the services because we have the budget and we will send the reimbursement. Once they give us the money, we are golden. If we don't get the money, then we will come back through our OMB budget process and, and move the money from reserves to cover this expense.
Okay, I guess, let me, let me rephrase my question. We were expecting to get reimbursed the additional 4 million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Correct. Okay, so, because they said the cutoff is April 14th, anything after April 14th is on us.
13th, yes.
April 13th, excuse me. But we already, they already knew our budget.
Correct.
So, they're saying they're out of money. I'm, I'm just, we're gonna do this regardless of what happens. We need more information regardless of what happens. My question is, will we ever have the opportunity, maybe if the count, if the state decides that they have all the funding and they have the authority, will we have the possibility of get reimbursed the whole 4 million?
Yes, we will. We'll continue to, we'll continue to provide this.
I know I'm being a little thick, I apologize, but.
We will.
We will continue to request be, be, to be reimbursed because there was an original commitment for a certain dollar amount.
For the total amount, yes.
And that's what we budgeted. And so now they've come up short reprioritizing or whatever they did. And so we're saying, come July 1, their normal process and we'll monitor it and my guys, we'll continue to monitor the budget, proposed budget, to see if they're gonna allocate dollars again come July 1. That'll be a new fiscal year for this program. So the 4 million that we're proposed, we're, we're projecting, we may be short if they don't reimburse us. It's part of the overall budget they gave us. We're gonna spend as though we're gonna get it. We'll find out come June 30th and then if they don't, then we'll clean it up.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the clarity.
All right. So what we have in front of us is to approve, the motion is to approve up to 4 million dollars to help carry us through the, we'll continue to try and reclaim our money from the state. And if we're successful, that money will be available, stay in the reserves, otherwise we'll take it out of reserves to cover this expenditure. Is everybody clear on what's in front of us now?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none. All in favor? All opposed? This motion carries seven to zero. Thank you very much. And if anybody can get any information additional on what's happening.
We'll reach out to the state.
If you guys will keep us informed. I think we'd all like to understand really what happened.
Too.
Oh, you too?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All right, moving on. We are now on to item 5J1. This is from the county attorney. And has to do with PACE funding. What's that?
You could hear.
Whoops. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Chief Assistant County Attorney, David Audi. And with me today is Chief Assistant County Attorney, Mariana Sarkisian, who has worked on this item and will be one of the litigators handling the lawsuit if it is approved. And also with me is Assistant County Attorney, Ryan Mayer. The staff recommends motion to, A, adopt a resolution declaring an immediate danger to the health, safety and welfare in, to the public in Palm Beach County that requires immediate action and a county's, that, declaring that a county's significant legal rights will be compromised if it is required to exhaust the conflict resolution process for intergovernmental entities with respect to the procedures of Florida PACE Funding Agency before initiating court procedures. And B, to direct staff to initiate litigation to resolve the county's conflict with FPFA regarding its alleged independent authority to administer its PACE program in the county without the Board of County Commissioners authorization through the PACE ordinance. On January 3rd, 2023, FPFA terminated the interlocal agreement with the county that authorized it to operate in the county pursuant to the county's PACE ordinance. Since then, it has continued to operate in the county based on a Leon County Circuit Court order from a bond validation proceeding where the court granted FPFA independent statewide authority. FPFA's current operations in the county is without an interlocal agreement and therefore violates the PACE ordinance and FPFA's purported independent statewide authority, which had arrived from the Leon County Circuit Court order, is not binding on Palm Beach County. Furthermore, the order is invalid as it goes beyond the statutory scope of the banned bond validation ruling and it violates the county's procedural and substantive due process rights. Now, it's, it's important to note that FPFA began the bond validation proceedings in September of last year and the order was granted by the court on November 14th of last year. That's two days before our ordinance went into effect, the amended ordinance for PACE provision. And during that time, they had several meetings with staff and came before the board on several occasions and curiously did not mention anything about the bonds, bond validation proceedings in Leon County, nor did they provide us with notice as they would have been required. So on March 7th, the county attorney's office sent a letter to FPFA advising them that they were to desist, cease and desist their operation. They pretty much ignored us and continued to operate. And it's important to note that between March 7th, when we sent them the letter telling them to cease and desist their operation in Palm Beach County as it was illegal and violating our ordinance, they went on to originate 136 loans between then and last Tuesday, which is April 11th, for approximately 4.4 million dollars. Of course, the reason is pretty clear why they opted out or terminated our interlocal agreement was that they wanted to operate in Palm Beach County without the provisions that are in the ordinance to protect the consumers. They were opposed to that as they made clear throughout the proceedings and that's the basis. So, that is really the significant harm and the danger to health, safety and welfare where they're originating these loans without affording those citizens the protection of the ordinance. Now, Chapter 164 of Florida statute requires that when there is intergovernmental conflict that we should avail ourselves of the intergovernmental conflict resolution procedures. That process takes at a minimum about 95 days. The concern with that is that if we were supposed to go through that procedure by the end of it, and that's the minimum, that's, that's the minimum. It could take much longer, depend on all the other contingencies, getting a mediator, the board's meeting, finding an available period and all of that. We believe our significant legal rights would be impaired and that the citizens would be exposed to the dangers to their health, safety and welfare by PACE originating those loans without following the consumer protection procedures. Well, the statute recognizes, legislature recognized the need where in some cases it's prudent to proceed without going through the intergovernmental process. And the statute provides that the conflict resolution process can be circumvented if the government entity by three-fourths vote finds that there's an immediate danger to the safety, health, safety or welfare, health, safety and welfare of the public and it requires immediate attention or that significant legal rights will be compromised if court proceedings are delayed until after the conflict resolution process. We believe we have both here. As a result, staff recommends that a bond, that a board of county commissioner finds by a three-fourth majority that an immediate danger to the safe healthy, health and welfare of the public requires immediate attention and that a significant legal rights will be compromised if court proceedings are delayed until the county exhausts the intergovernmental conflict resolution process. And therefore, direct staff to file an emergency injunction and a declaratory judgment action against FPFA.
All right, thank you. Is, are there questions for staff at this time? I don't see any. All right. Is, is there a motion? We have a motion by Commissioner Barnett, a second by Commissioner Woodward. I don't see any further discussion on this item. Is there any cards? No? All right. All right, with that.
And that includes A and B?
A and, yes, A and B. So this would be to adopt the resolution declaring an immediate danger to the health, safety and welfare of the public in Palm Beach County and direct staff to initiate litigation to resolve the county's conflict on item B. One question, though, can you also ask the court, once you file for immediately, to give them to stop in Palm Beach County until this is resolved?
Well, that's the basis of the emergency injunction.
So you'll file that injunction at the same time?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Woodward, you recognize.
Sorry, I was writing down, how many loans did you say had been, I have over 4 million dollars, but how many was it?
136.
136.
And that was actually between March 12th and April 11th.
And so they're continuing as of right at this minute to be operating and doing this?
That's correct.
To be signing loans today. How quickly will this go into effect? Will it go by today, tomorrow? When will, when will they stop?
Well, first we'll file a lawsuit and then the court will give them a certain time to respond and then there'll be a hearing and the court will make a decision. It doesn't go as fast as we would like because what we'd like is something to be put in effect right away. But the court will give them a right to be heard and then there is an evidentiary hearing and then the court makes its determination.
Are we talking weeks, a month? How?
It's hard to say depending on the court's workload. It gets priority, but whether or not it's week or month, it's hard to predict. For example, we went a couple of years ago with an emergency injunction for impact fees and it took us a little more than a year.
Well, do we, sorry, Mayor, one other question. Do we, as a board or as a county, do we have the ability to perhaps do PSA announcements to, something to get out to the public to let them know, to at least be wary of this if they're being approached right now by this group to, to take out a loan and to let them know, maybe to look into it? Do we have that ability?
I think as well within the board's authority.
Okay.
To, to instruct the staff to do that.
Is that something I could make a motion for? Or, I don't know how to properly word that, but.
We have a motion already.
Oh, we have to vote on that, sorry.
And then we can take up.
Okay, let's take our vote. You go.
Well, we have a couple other Commissioners first. Okay, Commissioner Sax, then Commissioner Baxter and then Commissioner Marino.
It's been a long journey for the attorney's office, I know. But can we do an emergency motion for injunction? Is that what we're doing?
We're doing an emergency injunction.
That should be, that should be within a matter of a week or two to get a hearing for an emergency motion and/or cease and desist and to freeze the assets of this company that operates in Florida.
We do the best we can in terms of filing and it gets assigned to a judge. How fast that gets done by the judge is.
I'm not asking for filing, I'm asking for an emergency motion, cease and desist their operations in the state of Florida, file with the Attorney General in Tallahassee. And third, or fourth, to do a, to do freezing of their assets here in the state of Florida so that whatever restitution they need to do, we have the funds available. And I guess I'm looking at county, the county attorney.
We are gonna file an emergency injunction immediately. We've been working on it and we've got it prepared and we've been working in coordination with the other county attorney offices throughout the state of Florida. We will ask them to cease and desist operation immediately. Our ability to get a hearing date for our emergency injunction is up to the courts. I, hopefully they would be sympathetic to this cause, but they do, we do have to follow certain steps. And as we said in the impact fee case, it took us quite a while to get a hearing, but that was a different situation. This is a consumer situation, so we would be expecting and hopeful that we would have a hearing rather quickly. We have no problem with notifying the AG about this situation if they don't already know, absolutely, and see what kind of action that they would like to take and, and see if there's anything further we can do to make sure that people are protected. We will definitely work with Public Affairs to get the information out there. I think it's important that people know. And the Tax Collector's Office, I would also notice, has, is here today and they have been involved in this intimately with us and very helpful in getting us ready to go right now.
Would, and thank you, if I may, Mayor. I see the Tax Collector happens to be present here in the, in the chambers. A couple of things. First of all, we get up to the AG's office in Tallahassee. Can we not use her office and authority to stop this in the state of Florida? Secondly, would a letter from this Palm Beach County Commission maybe nudge them a bit to let them know the severity of the issue and, and the emergency nature of the issue? And third, doesn't, don't these applications go through the Tax Collector's Office? Yes, possibly, right, yes. So, if they do, can we not use our legal efforts to connect with the Tax Collector's Office to immediate, I guess we would need a court order for that? To stop the processing in the Tax Collector's Office? Or, I wonder if Ms. Gannon could, with the mayor's permission, come to the podium and give us a.
Commissioner, before we get to that portion, just for your first question, just want you to be mindful that there is a circuit court order in effect that purports to give them the authority to operate statewide, which is what they're holding. So I don't think short of a court order invalidating that circuit court's order for Palm Beach County, there's gonna be any other legal authority that, Attorney General could, but the attorney, I don't think they would take the position that an Attorney General's opinion or direction overturns the circuit court's opinion. So that's why we're using a court, which is the process.
Are we using the circuit court particular division to request this emergency motion for injunction?
Sure.
Sure. It's the same, it's the same division, right, that has given them the initial authority to, to, to do business here in Palm Beach County?
It was Leon County, that's the Second Circuit, we're the 15th Circuit, and that's one of our contentions that Leon County has, at a circuit court level, has no authority over Palm Beach County, so that, that opinion is not binding. Somehow the judge, in our opinion, exceeded its authority by giving them an order saying that they can operate statewide as opposed to limiting the jurisdiction to Leon County.
Right. So to the Commissioners, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor's comments, there's no harm in giving the AG a copy of our complaint, letting her know what's going on, giving them a copy maybe of Pinellas's complaint, because Pinellas is also in the process of filing, as will other county attorney's offices. There's no harm in saying, we don't believe that they're authorized to operate here and, and we are letting them know this is their method of operation or trying, trying to be their method of operation throughout the county and county, the state.
Oh, we're happy to do that.
I appreciate that. I appreciate getting up to the AG's office. And this is in response to Commissioner Woodward's question about how quickly can we move on this? If we, as a county commission, know that there is a business operating in this county to the detriment of our people, we need to move as quickly and as, and as, as, you know, as fastidiously as we can under the, under the, I didn't know, this is a circuit court in Leon County that's given, oh, gosh, this is gonna be wonderful. Let's get this into our, into our, maybe our chief judge here at. Let's get this into our, into our, maybe our chief judge here at, but, let me just take a breath. Would a letter from the county commission help to move this along in, since it's doing business in our county, we are the county representatives, to the AG's office or even to a circuit judge here in, in Palm Beach?
I see if we sent a copy of the complaint, I see no problem sending a letter to the AG's office explaining what they're doing because this is a statewide issue. I, I'm not sure that it would be appropriate to do anything in the court case here. I think we need to let that work itself out a little bit. And we are prepared to file, we're going to do everything we can to get this heard as quickly as possible.
Very good, thank you very much. Thank you, I appreciate that. I'll leave that up to the mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
I just wanted to say I support putting out a public service announcement in the meantime so that our citizens are aware of what is going on and what could potentially happen. And along with Commissioner Sacks, if we need to get a letter together for the AG, I would love to do that.
All right, thank you. All right, I think we've exhausted... Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Mr. Mayor, do we have, since we have a motion, can we just add, to just include the letter, a letter signed by the mayor to send to the Attorney General?
Okay, so we're going to amend the motion to include a letter to the AG with our, I guess with our case. Strongly worded. Strongly. All right. Yeah, Tax Collector Gannon, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm Ann Gannon, the Palm Beach County Tax Collector. I, I wanted to just share with you that when you put a public service announcement out, it is only for this one agency. We have four other agencies that operate in this county, and this will not affect them because they have not gone to court as the Florida PACE Funding Agency. So it doesn't stop all these applications, what it stops is this company only. And I think that's important for you to convey to the public.
Oh, that's, okay, so that, that's really good information, Tax Collector Gannon, to understand. So this is, so the other entities that offer this financing program are still operating under our county ordinance?
Correct.
And it's just this one entity?
Yes, Florida PACE Funding Agency, FPFA.
Which the person, the consumer mayor may not recognize.
Specifically, well, I, I think we'd have to do whatever we can in that public service announcement to emphasize that because they're, obviously, pretty busy and originating a bunch of loans, so...
Please, if you have any ideas on, on how we do this?
Well, we, we can actually put it in our monthly newsletter, but these, there are specific neighborhoods that are targeted for these loans, and we all know that. So, but here, here's what, because of the action you're taking, we're now able to write the Florida PACE Funding Agency a letter and tell them we are not adding their loans to the tax bill. And the way the process works is the property appraiser will add it on the trim notice and our office will remove them. But we felt an obligation to let them know with the loans we have sitting in our office that we were not adding those to the tax bill, and this does not affect any of the other agencies. And we will work with them and let them know what's going on now.
So maybe that's really important information and maybe we need to rethink how we, whether or not, if you're not going to be adding them onto their tax bills, then maybe we just, I don't know if we need to say anything.
Well, we would actually write the loans that are currently in our office a letter and explain to them. We wouldn't hang these people out.
Okay.
Because frankly, I, I would suggest that most of them have received the money for these loans if they've been processed.
Interesting. Vice Mayor, and then Commissioner Woodward.
I just want to thank Tax Collector Gannon for getting in on this quickly. You spoke out against this issue months ago, and now we see that it really is a paper tiger and that really hurts our constituents. So thank you to your office. I see you have a couple of your staff members there who also testified before this board some time ago about this particular agency. So thank you, Ms. Gannon. And I would just suggest that we, we go along, you know, we take care of this on the motion and do what Commissioner Bernard said to, to include a letter to the Attorney General's office and don't bother with the court. Don't prejudice the court, but certainly to the Attorney General's office, and this will be a matter of record. And if anybody wants to put it out to their constituents in their newsletters, they can do what they feel is best, especially any representative here who has those districts that are targeted, that would be a, a good idea. So I would, I would move that we vote. I think it's already been by Sarah Baxter. Yes, that's good.
Commissioner Woodward, then Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions. One, if the Tax Collector is not going to be putting the loans on the bill and the people have actually signed a contract, does that, how, where does that leave the consumer that has signed this contract? Are they, they're still, they still have to pay the loan, right?
They still have to pay the loan. I just want to be clear.
Okay, so I, I still think we should be adamant to get this word out to people so that they don't sign the contract, even if, if, you know, the message is going to go to the company. I don't know that they will necessarily stop trying to do this. I think it's very important we get the word out to the consumers.
And if I may, just to add to it, that when they wrote the letter to the county saying that they were terminating interlocal agreement, they emphasized that their agreement with the Tax Collector still stands. So I guess that was the effort to do the end around to say, hey, we are not operating under the ordinance, but we still get it on the tax bill. So I think...
So this will, her, her movement to tell them that she doesn't have the agreement with them should help?
Yeah, I, I think that definitely helps. We discussed that with the Tax Collector. I think that would at least force them, FPFA, if they disagree to either take, file legal action against the Tax Collector or the Tax Collector may intervene in our suit to get a court to declare that they don't have to add it to the tax bill. Those are some of the options we discussed.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
Thank you. In the beginning, you said, clarify, you said mediation would take 95 days?
No, the intergovernmental process. The statute requires first that you send a letter and give a certain number of days' notice to the other entities to have the two administrations meet to discuss. And if that fails, it provides for an additional, I think, 15 days to notify them, and then they respond for the two boards to decide on a date to meet and have that processed. And then if that fails, then there's a set amount of days to pick a mediator and then have a mediation. And if that fails, then you file a lawsuit.
Okay, so that was like six months, on the, on the good side. Is this a, given what you said about the other time you went for an emergency and it took a year, and I don't know if this is even doable, do we do both of these processes at the same time, hoping that, you know, one comes up faster than the other?
Declare her judgment and injunction?
Yeah.
Yes, we do both simultaneously.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Moreno, okay. I don't see any other lights lit. We can now move on, call, nobody else, any other questions or comments? We'll move on, call a question. All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. And then getting on to the notification, I think, and that Commissioner Woodward asked us to, to, to do, is that just staff direction? Can we just give staff direction to do that? And you guys can work out how you, because obviously the other providers are doing the right thing, doing the good job, and, and we don't want to interfere with what they're doing. Okay, good, all right, we're good. All right.
I just want to, for clarification, we're going to have a letter from us, signed by you, Mayor, that will go along with that as well. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, it'll be part of their, it was part of the original, or the amended motion was to include a letter. Okay, all right. Well, this has been an interesting meeting.
Thank you.
All right, let's see, I think we're done with all of our add-ons?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, now moving on to commission district appointments, item number six. And we will start at my left, and that would be Commissioner Barnett. Thank you, Mayor. For the planning commission, I would like to reappoint Dagmar Bras. Thank you. Commissioner Woodward?
None at this time.
Commissioner Moreno? Commissioner Bernard?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Baxter?
I move to reappoint Don Dufresny to the Torres Development Council.
Okay, thank you. All right, and Vice Mayor, do you have any appointment?
None.
There's not, you don't need a motion for, for appointments.
For that board, even though...
It's your appointment.
Okay, that's good.
All right.
None.
And then I would like to appoint, reappoint Deborah Chandler to the Palm Beach County Infrastructure Independent Certax Oversight Board. Okay. Moving on, staff comments, item number seven, administration.
I have good news. I think we could use it. I'd like to, and I don't even see him in the room, recognize Archie Satchel, who is our Chief Information Officer that directs our ISS Department. He has been selected as one of Government Technology's top 25 Doers, Dreamers, and Drivers, and that's throughout the country. We, he works really hard for us, not only for Palm Beach County, but he's recognized in the state and serves on not only state committees, but also national committees. So he helps us stay out of trouble as much as possible, and I'd like to recognize him and thank him for all of his hard work because we're really proud of him. The last one is, just received this as well, Palm Beach County was awarded 2022-23 Gold Bell Seal for Workplace Mental Health. So that helps us and there's no shame in asking for help. We have an EAP program. We encourage our employees to utilize it when they need to. It's also covered under our health insurance. And so we want to make sure that we're not only providing it for the community, but we're also providing it for our employees as well. And Archie just joined us.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Archie, would you like to say anything?
Uh, yeah. Teach me to come back.
Since you did come back.
Good afternoon, everyone. Yeah, it's a great honor to be recognized by GovTech Magazine as one of the top 25 leaders in IT in the nation. So it's because of the board, County Administrator Baker, that helps me to be who I am for the county, that helps me to get this award. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for all you do for our county. All right. Anything else, Madam Administrator?
Yes, sir.
Okay, county attorney, no comments, okay. Okay, moving on to commissioner comments, and we will start on my right, Commissioner Baxter this morning, or this afternoon.
So two things. Without objection, I would like to request a spreadsheet on, of all properties in the county that have been referred to OFMB for collections related to code enforcement cases. This spreadsheet should include outstanding fine amounts and negotiated settlements. And secondly, I would like to make a correction. So the Sweet Corn Fiesta is actually going to be on April 30th, so please come out and join us at the fairgrounds.
Thank you very much. Can you send that, those spreadsheets to everybody, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no comments.
Okay. Let's go, we'll come back to you. Let's go to Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you. I would like to request an off-site proclamation declaring April 28, 2023 as annual Stand Against Racism Day. This is going to be at the Rivera Beach Marina, if anybody else wants to join me, I'd be happy to be there. Also, just to, in the future, just some more information now about septic to sewer. I know we've, we've set aside some dollars for that, and I know that up in the Juno Isles area, Seacoast is thinking of converting them and, you know, what other, what costs can be offset. And I know we talked about it, we had our dollars put aside for it, so can we just get an update on what we're doing at those dollars? Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Woodward? Okay, Commissioner Barnett?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I would like to request approval for an off-site certificate of recognition to commemorate Lake Worth High School's 100th anniversary. And I also just wanted to thank all of my fellow commissioners, Ms. Verdinia, Todd, and so many people at the county who reached out. As you know, my brother passed away on Wednesday. He had been struggling with some issues related to addiction, which is one of the issues that I wanted to address as commissioner ever since my appointment. And I lost one of my family, but I was really pleasantly surprised to see that Team Palm Beach County, Family Palm Beach County, reached out, and I'm grateful to all of you. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a, a motion by Commissioner Baxter, a second by Commissioner Moreno, all in favor, all opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. All right. Now, Vice Mayor, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to express my sorrow at losing a family member, Commissioner Barnett. And as, as is stated many times, we are family here. And what happens, even though we can't hang out and talk as freely as we would like to sometimes, but I want you to know that you're part of our team family here at Palm Beach County. And your loss is felt by many, and we will work with everybody here to make sure that every person in this county has services to assist them. God bless you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor, those kind words. I think you all received an email from my office. I'm requesting you give me permission to send a letter to the Coast Guard regarding the bridge openings that are impacting traffic in downtown West Palm Beach. And so, without any objection?
Do you need a motion?
I don't, I don't think I need, I just, I just need approval from the board, right? Yeah, but thank you. Okay, and then also, I attended, as, you know, as your representative, I attended a meeting between the, with the airport and the city of Atlantis, talk about some of the, what the future. And just to bring you up to, to date, there was discussion on how the Part 150 study is getting restarted. That's the, the study about, regarding noise around the airport. So that has been, is being restarted. They are working on a memorandum of understanding between Palm Beach County and the city of Atlantis, and that'll be, continue to be worked on going forward. And we are, will be continuing to have discussions. We're not finished yet, and so there'll be probably a couple more rounds of discussions as we move forward, but that's bringing you up to date on what's transpired last week. So that's what I have to, to share with you all today. And if nothing, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, then this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.